Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 8, 2009, meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll begin by approving this agenda. Do any school committee members have any changes or corrections? No, hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept this agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Thank you. We don't have anyone signed up for Citizen Speak, I believe, so we'll move right into the minutes of our school committee meeting on November 3, 2009. Do you hear the motion? Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Gormley, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight and to welcome to the table the Glover Site Council, led by Dr. Dory Caution and parent representative John Sapalsa. Excellent, excellent. And I'll turn it over to them. And welcome, and thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you for having us. I'm happy that I have a most valuable representative of the school site council with me tonight, and it's unfortunate that our other members all have other commitments. Tonight, we're here to talk to everyone about our school improvement plan for this year and what we are doing to respond to the challenges of adequate yearly progress, otherwise known as AYP. Last summer, when we received our present status of Needs Improvement on AYP, I must say that the Glover School was rather jolted by this. We are a school with very, very high expectations, and we care immensely about the progress and improvement of each of our students. And although we certainly have certain challenges that we deal with day in, day out, year in, year out, nevertheless, we feel that every student needs to meet with success. And so our staff members and myself met, and we take this very seriously, and we came up with a school improvement plan that had buy-in and input from absolutely everyone involved. And so tonight, I would like to take you through that school improvement plan, or at least a synopsis of it, and then, you know, to open up to any questions that you might have about it. So what happened is that when we received the status, one thing that we were surprised, as I crunched the data, I found that if only 14 of our students in grades 3, 4, and 5 had moved to the next level, so in other words, there are four levels, Warning, Needs Improvement, Proficient, and Advanced, if we had had just 14 students in grades 3, 4, and 5 who had moved to the next level, we would have made AYP. And that was a very interesting fact for our teachers, because that means, you know, one student per class could have moved from Warning to Needs Improvement, or Needs Improvement to Proficient, or Proficient to Advanced, and it would have made all the difference. And so they thought that that was very doable. So we met as a staff at the end of August, when we had our professional development day, and we examined MCAS results for Glover. We compared those scores to district and state scores. We discussed a lot, and we reflected. We were wondering why certain things were the way they were. Teachers were surprised at some of the results that they saw, and we started to formulate action plans. What we did is, after this, when the state results were completely out, there is a security portal in which you can go for the DESE, and through that, you can obtain individual MCAS results with standards for each and every one of your students. So I went in there and got all of those profiles for each one of our students that was in Needs Improvement and Warning. And if you look in your folders tonight, you're going to see, I took out the name of this particular student, but here is an example of what I'm talking about, and I thought that you would be interested in seeing this. I'm almost sure that none of you have seen this before. So if you look, for example, at the sheet that says Student Test Results with Standards, you see there a student who was in grade 4 and took the MCAS test. Okay, so that would be at the very front of your folder. And you can see all of the areas in which the student was tested, and you can also see whether, you know, the question was an open response, or a multiple choice, or a writing prompt, and how they did in every one of the standards. And what's nice about this is that the teachers, and many of our parents to whom I have distributed these, can look to see what the student's score was, but also how the student did compared to other students in the school, to the district, the state, and then the differential with the state. And so if, as a parent or as a teacher, you look at a profile like this, and you see that a student, for example, is, let's say, 19 percent below the state achievement, then, you know, that would be an area that you would say, wow, you know, we need to focus on that particular area. By the same token, if you look on the left-hand side of those profiles, you see one that says Open Response. So this student in English got a score of 6 out of a maximum of 16 on Open Response, and Open Response is weighted, so we know that there's work to be done there. The student, on the other hand, got 30 out of 36 on Multiple Choice, which was a much better score. So that tells us a lot. So the teachers, having these in hand, this is very important, as they are targeting instruction to meet the needs of each individual student. And these are available for all of the different subjects in which students are tested, so on the next page, you can take a glance at the math, for example. With this, then, we decided that we would maximize time on learning and provide support for underperforming students based on data collection and analysis. So, for example, in the English classrooms, we are pulling children out of Spanish in order to give them extra time on learning. And once again, these profiles are very useful for that. And the same thing in French immersion, where the teachers are doing the pullouts, but they're doing them within the classrooms. I have to emphasize, though, as I'm saying this, that the profiles aren't only to look at children, let's say, who are in Warning or Needs Improvement, because we're also concerned with students who are proficient and need to move to Advanced. So when you look at a profile like this, if a student is in proficient, you can see the areas where they can improve and target that, so that you can try to move them to Advanced. And even for a student who's in Advanced, if you see that there is an area where that child lost points, and I just recently had a student like that, who was into Advanced, but who nevertheless didn't do so well with Open Response, and had lost the few points that she lost, she lost only on Open Response. So talking with her mother, I said to her, you know, let's give you some examples of Open Response, and you can work on this at home. Similarly, we said that to the teacher. So this is very useful data. We also have been having ongoing grade-level meetings to discuss assessments and to modify action plans when needed. Standards-based instruction. All of us, I believe all of the principals in Milton at the elementary level, are working very, very hard to make our instruction standards-based. So we have grade-level meetings, kindergarten through 5th grade, to align instruction to the frameworks. I am providing common planning time in grades 4 and 5 to align instruction to frameworks. We want the teachers to teach to the standard and provide differentiated instruction. So in other words, we want all children to master the standards for each subject area. But with that, teachers must differentiate instruction, because some students are ready to go forward, and some students, on the other hand, need accommodations, they may need reteaching. So that is really, to me, the characteristic of your excellent teacher, knowing how to differentiate for the three groups that are within your classroom. And then the use of common assessments and benchmarks, and as we go through Reader's Workshop a little bit later, I'll talk to you about some of those common assessments. Open Response Initiative. We started an Open Response Initiative. We've had some over the years, but last year, when we saw that this was definitely an area where we had some weaknesses overall throughout the district, we started an initiative where every month, at least two or more samples of Open Response work, student work, graded with the rubric, is submitted to the principal twice monthly.
Excuse me. Could you just, for those watching, could you just define what an Open Response question is?
I can.
For others, it doesn't mean a thing.
Yes. Now, for you people who are here, I did include in your folders two examples. One of them is entitled "Lights, Camera, Barking," and it's a passage that would be a 5th grade passage, and includes in there a rubric from the Department of Education. So if you go through, you have multiple-choice questions, but then a little bit further on, you have a rubric, a general rubric, a generic rubric, that the Department of Education gives you, and this is what they use to score. So an Open Response question is one that requires a student to look at a question that is not multiple choice, but that's open-ended, and to answer that question using evidence from the text to support the answer. So the Department of Education isn't looking for just one detail to support the answer. They're probably looking for at least three details. So if you look at the general, generic rubric, this is what they use to determine the score that the student will get. And any parent who would like to go on the DESE website can actually look up different Open Response questions, and find the rubric, and also find how the students' responses were scored. So in the package that you, the school committee members, have here, and Mary and John, you can see what deserved a score point of 4. You can then turn the page and see what got a score point of 3, a 2, and a 1. Okay? So basically, what you're looking for in a 4 is a correct answer for all the parts, a complete, correct, clear explanation, some important details, with an S, if I can remark, and excellent evidence of clear understanding. So how are students brought to know what to do? Well, they're brought to know what to do by examples such as this, that the DESE provides us with, and that the teacher will hold up for the students on a regular basis, and says, well, look, you know, children, you know, boys and girls, this is what a 4 looks like. This is what a 3 looks like. And then I gave you a second sample there, which was a teacher-generated one, and this was a lesson where I saw the teacher actually, the children read a poem, and then there was a sample answer, and it was called Sample 1. And the students had been given a rubric by the teacher, and they were to examine Sample 1 and see whether, what did that deserve? Did it deserve a 4, a 3, a 2, or a 1? And, you know, as the teacher brought them through and compared the sample answer with the rubric that she had, this particular teacher, the children were able to say, hey, wait a minute, there are some essential points missing here. For example, this teacher always insists that the students start every Open Response question with a sentence that retells the question, and then the name of the author and the name of the text. So if a student didn't have that, they would instantly lose one point. And then there would have to be supporting details and evidence from the text. And so if you look at then Sample 2 and Sample 3, you can see how much more comprehensive Sample 3 is, and that would be deserving of a 4.
But does that sort of answer your question, Ms. Lovely?
Yes, good. So these, this Open Response Initiative, then, is very important, and we hope will make a significant difference, because we've noticed that, we at the Glover, have lost many of our points to Open Response answers. Daily writing, student portfolios, response journals, anchor charts, to increase student understanding and written expression. So if you're wondering what anchor charts are, they're simply helpful charts that should be around every classroom, that give students help as they're trying to get through their daily work each day, and as they're trying to develop more skills. The Tufts Initiative or Reader's Workshop, and once again, I have included for you an overview of Reader's Workshop. It tells you there what Reader's Workshop is, and also sort of how a lesson in Reader's Workshop progresses. But Reader's Workshop is a structure for teaching reading that combines explicit teacher-directed instruction and reading strategies and literary elements, with lots of time for children to practice reading independently with books of their own choosing. This year, we are continuing this initiative in grades 3 through 5. We started the initiative a few years ago at Glover in grades K through 2, and now we have expanded it. We've had professional development focusing on Reader's Workshop, and we have a Tufts consultant who is coming to us on an ongoing basis this year to support the teachers, to model lessons, to see them modeling lessons, and to give them constructive feedback. Teachers' observations, at our school at least, are being focused on Reader's Workshop, and we are attempting, those of us who are observing teachers, to provide valuable and constructive feedback about how teachers can improve in delivering instruction and bringing about the strategies involved in Reader's Workshop. Expansion of a leveled bookroom collection to include fiction and nonfiction books with a wide range of genre, topic, and reading levels. We started to build up a dedicated room, actually, for a leveled library at Glover, and we're very, very excited about it, because we're finally starting to have now, I would say, more than dozens of books, maybe hundreds of books, at different levels, so that kids can choose just right books that are at their level of reading. The second part of our school improvement plan involves communication. Communication to teachers. Maximize the use of faculty meetings to communicate school and district goals, to provide professional development, and to discuss implementation of initiatives, and I mentioned already a number of those that we've had. Provide common planning time for 4th and 5th grade teachers to align curriculum, plan instruction, and assessments. And of course, there is also a built-in planning time for the K through 3 teachers, but this is a little bit of extra time for 4th and 5th grade, because they really need to come together and be on the same page, talk about how they're using data, talk about their Open Response writing, and everything that they do throughout the week to improve student achievement. Parents and community. Communicate via PTO meetings and school site council, the weekly Post-it, and the Alert Now phone calls and emails. I mentioned before that Glover has gone green, so that's more important than ever. Buy monthly principal's newsletter, monthly principal's coffee. Encourage parent volunteers, such as cats, library, guest readers, Math League, Typing Club, Chess Club, which all contribute to student achievement. Promote community involvement with our senior citizen volunteers, our Milton High School student volunteers, and our Milton Academy volunteers. And I'm very excited about one of these particularly, which started last week, and that is, we have four juniors, junior, juniors in high school, at Milton High School, who are coming over to Glover once a week to do their community work and tutor students in the library. We have students K through 5. We must have had maybe, I would say, about 15 of them last week, with these four young men who are absolutely unbelievable, doing math homework, previewing reading lessons, and really giving students that extra time, and all for free, because this is their community service work. So that's a really wonderful opportunity for kids. And then a new initiative, which actually Mr. Sapalsa is bringing to us, a Junior Achievement, which we're going to pilot this year in the 3rd grade at Glover School, and if you have any questions regarding that, I encourage you to speak to him about it. So that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I certainly would like to try to answer them for you.
Why don't we hear a little bit about the Junior Achievement Initiative? That would be great.
So for those of you who aren't familiar with Junior Achievement, it started as a high-school-only curriculum, and essentially, it's volunteer-based, usually in communities like Milton, it usually comes from the PTO, and they volunteer to teach five classes, usually ranging for about a half hour to 45 minutes. And the essence of Junior Achievement is really to teach the principles of economics, so it's a really good way for parents to get involved. In some other communities, it's volunteers outside the school, but typically, in communities like Milton, it's funded by the PTO. So we're excited to test it, and I think we've chosen the 3rd grade as a good pilot program, and if that goes well, we'll decide whether to roll it out to the whole school in future years, but I think it's a good place to start.
That's great.
Any particular questions that you have, I'm happy to...
Mrs. Kelly?
Is this a before-school or after-school program, or how does it...
It's usually, it's, they can do either one, but it's most successful is usually during the school program, and so what happens is the parent and the teacher coordinate a time once a week for five weeks in a row. Usually, it's right after the holiday break in January or after February break. Because we got a little bit of a late start this year, we're going to try to schedule it starting after the February break, and, you know, go from there. But it really depends on the school, and the teacher, and ultimately, the volunteer.
Thank you.
The 3rd grade teachers have an activity every Friday that they call Switcheroom, where the children from all of our 3rd grade classes go from one room to the other, so that this way the children get mixed together, and so one of the activities will be the Junior Achievement, and then the other stations will be other activities.
I believe back in Cunningham days, we did Great Books during that same thing. So, but is Great Books still part of the Switcheroom, or...
No. At Glover, we're not doing Great Books. So the teachers had this idea, some of them are the same teachers, actually, some of them, and why don't we do a switcheroom?
And ultimately, it's, one way to look at it is, it's, I think, a high-value enrichment program that not only gets parents involved, but is free.
How many parents are involved?
So it really depends on how you set up the program. The way we're thinking about doing it, you could actually have, because there's five classes, you could have five parents, but because it's this way, you could actually also just have one parent that just stays in the classroom and rotates around, but would be there for five sessions. So it allows us some flexibility on volunteers as well. If we don't get five full volunteers to commit for five weeks, we have some flexibility.
The theme naturally in 3rd grade, because every year has a different theme for Junior Achievement, the theme in 3rd grade is careers. So it should be a very interesting one, because parents can come in and share their community achievement.
Wonderful. Thank you for bringing that to Glover. That's great. Ms. Vagby Jones?
I don't know if this is a comment or a question or a comment, but I, however I personally might feel about the MCAS being one test, one measure of a child's achievement, I do appreciate the fact that you went through and were able to give to each teacher for each child that needed to move up a step. I think that that speaks to a lot of work done on your part and your staff's part, that really will help individual kids just get one or two more points to push them up, and I think that that's great, and you guys should be commended for taking that extra and making that extra work.
We do a fair amount of work.
Yeah. It's a lot of work.
They want us to get out of this guy's work, and I think it's a fair achievement.
And you deserve to be out of that status.
Ms. Gormley?
When you see Mr. Sapasa's...
She has one.
When you see Mr. Sapasa's reaction, and you can tell the value of site councils, that parents are involved, they're understanding, they're speaking to other parents in the community, they're bringing programs like Junior Achievement into the schools, it speaks to the value of organizations like the site councils, and we have the privilege of meeting with the PTO presidents, and I was saying to Dr. Caution, it's a sharing time, we really just mediate and bring the meeting along, and it's very, very exciting what's happening with the PTOs and the site councils and the Milton Schools. And again, I could tell by the look on your face that you've been educated about this process, and again, it speaks to the value of site councils. And I appreciate you on behalf of all of the parents who give of their time and initiate programs like this. It does enhance education. And again, I think it might be life-changing for some of those 3rd graders to actually find a career that they want to then understand that they're working towards. So thank you, and thank you, Dr. Caution.
Mrs. Kelly?
Thank you. I'm very interested in the Student Test Results with Standards, and I understand that you've gone through them for those that are at a certain place. I guess my question is more global. What would it take to get every parent to get this level of detail to help their child? I think it's amazingly tremendous that you've reached out to those that are in those different groupings. But to me, this is an important tool for every parent who really wants to help out their child, and as a system, can we think about some way to put this kind of information in their hands? And then maybe, you know, you follow up with a conference that goes into some detail or whatever, but at least it starts with sort of a focus point for parents.
I thought I'd ask the parents at the PTO...
Could you speak in the microphone, please?
I brought this up to the parents at the PTO meetings and the coffees, that anybody who would want this, you know, certainly, I'll just go in there and get it for them, and you'd be surprised how many parents have asked me, whose children are very high achievers, but they want them to get to the next level. So it is a very useful tool.
That's great. And then one other question I had is, you have your school improvement plan, how do you communicate that with your parents? You know, how does this get out, this document, or, you know, sort of the efforts that are being undertaken? So that sort of all parents get the picture, the full picture of all the different things that are going on to raise student achievement.
It's interesting that you're asking that, because Mr. Sapalsa and I were just talking about this, and I am going to be putting out a very lengthy newsletter, and I thought that the big items that are here, such as Reader's Workshop, which parents really don't know what that is and how that's being rolled out in the school, same thing with Open Response, that each one of these newsletters would attack one of those areas, and just give parents some very comprehensive, detailed information.
Great. Thank you.
To Mrs. Kelly's point, all of these school improvement plans roll into our district school improvement plan, so after the next school committee meeting, when we have our final two presentations, then we'll put on the web all of the data under each category, and it will be under the district's plan with notes from each school, what they're doing to support that goal or to meet that goal.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving me the time and coming and sharing.
Next, I'd like to invite to the table, we have our English Curriculum Review Team update with our middle school new roles and new titles. Our middle school Humanities Coordinator, Stephanie Nephew. The last time you met Stephanie, she was Humanities, 6 through 12, and as you remember in the reorganization this summer, Stephanie and Dr. Spalding now take responsibility, assume responsibility for the curriculum at the middle school. And Martha Sherman, our Elementary Language Arts, Social Studies Coordinator and Title 1 Director. I'd also like to invite to the table tonight Barbara Wright. Barbara, would you come up and join us at the table? Barbara worked with Stephanie in a lead teacher position. Barbara is a history teacher at Milton High School, and she took a lead position with Stephanie last year. And in the reorganization, I'd like to congratulate and recognize Barbara Kelly Wright tonight. Barbara is the High School Humanities Department Head, English and History, 9 through 12, and she has jumped in and assumed the responsibilities and agreed to join us here tonight. So congratulations. So congratulations. First time the school committee has been introduced to Barbara Kelly Wright. And welcome Stephanie and Martha.
Thank you. Hello again, everybody. We're pleased to present the wrap-up of the English Language Arts Review Team Study, which has taken place over the last three years. It seems like it's been forever. English Language Arts is a vast domain of the curriculum. And we've tried to summarize the steps that we've taken throughout the process. We have presented to you two or three times before, so we have revised some of the presentations so it won't be as lengthy as it could be. So bear with us. These are our committee members. That hasn't changed, but I'd publicly like to thank the members of this team who, for their dedication, their hard work, their energy and their stamina with staying with us for all three years. They really worked very hard and diligently with all of the tasks that we had to accomplish. They rose to the occasion on every single time and really represented the system very well. So I'd publicly like to thank all of them for staying with us. And just as a reminder, the task was to identify focus areas, to collect research, and determine strengths and weaknesses. And as we investigated this over the past two or three years, we did respond to some of those areas and have instituted some initiatives. And we will highlight those at the end of the program. So bear with us. We have implemented some things to address the needs that we saw going through this So the focus areas that came to light were reading and what is reading? What do we do around the area of reading? Writing, curriculum initiatives, grade level benchmarks, assessment around curriculum, and then communication between the grade levels, between elementary to middle, middle to high school. This is your presentation.
One of the first things that we did when collecting data was to look at our MCAS data. It is a wealth of information that we can look at and understand our strengths and weaknesses as an English program. So just as a frame of reference, we specifically looked at the fourth grade, seventh grade, and tenth grade ELA tests. The reason we chose those was because those are the years that students do multiple choice, open response, and long composition. So they're doing all three types of the assessment. In other years, the long composition is not part of the assessment. This year currently, we have 65% of our students in grade four in proficient and advanced, 84% in seventh grade, and 90% in 10th grade. And this is something that we see as students move through the Milton public schools, we increase our level of proficient and advanced. So the one piece that we really wanted to look at as a team was, within those tests, what are our strengths and weaknesses in terms of strands and objectives that we teach on a daily basis? I like to think of teaching reading in three levels. We teach on the line, basic comprehension and fluency. We teach between the lines, really analyzing what the literature means. And we teach beyond the lines, sort of how does it relate to ourselves and the world? And what we see as a school, as a district, we saw it as trends across elementary, middle, and high, is we're very good at the basic comprehension, teaching on the line. Students, specifically in fiction, are able to get the basic comprehension, factual questions, they're doing well. And then vocabulary and grammar. So it is that, that one, that first level of teaching on the lines. In terms of an area of weakness, and again, we saw this across all three levels, open response is an issue in terms of a weakness. It is also a weakness across the state in terms of students struggling on the open response. And what we're seeing specifically is students being able to cite specific evidence from text to support their answers. We also have noticed a weakness in nonfiction. And one question we had is, are we exposing kids to enough nonfiction? And we will kind of get to that as we did some more investigation. Also, features of genres. Students struggle a little bit in terms of understanding the setup of a play and how they can use the text structure to help them comprehend the knowledge within it. In nonfiction, they might show a pamphlet. They don't know necessarily how to maneuver through that pamphlet to really understand the information that is provided. Charts, images, things that they can use, it's all about the text structure and understanding the features of that genre to really help themselves understand the comprehension. And finally, figurative language and poetry. The abstract is definitely hard for our students in terms of comprehending sort of what the message is trying to say. Again, sort of that abstract thinking is kind of difficult. The next phase of our work was to look at best practice research. And what we were seeing in the best practice research was, again, some trends that took place across all three levels. So that's what we highlighted tonight. One of the big things in terms of reading instruction is that it has to be varied. Moving away from the whole-class novel as the sole instructional tool at the high school level. Looking at a Reader's Workshop model as Dorey Caution had described earlier. Showing kids whole-class instruction, mini lessons, group instruction, maybe lit circles at the middle school level. And then also allowing students to do some independent work and providing choice for students so that they can be motivated to find things that are interesting to them. Some of the research showed that silent sustained reading in school improves student achievement. It's all about getting kids to read. And so teaching kids the tools to be lifelong readers is part of our job. And part of that is helping them understand what's interesting to them and how to pick a book that's at their level. But having that part of the curriculum is crucial. Again, the higher-level thinking piece, which is what we saw in our MCAS data that we struggle with in terms of the analysis, reading between the lines, making sure that that's part of instruction and making sure it's part of assessment as well. We also saw within all three levels, making sure that assessment is done in an authentic way, making sure it's varied and there's differentiation between assessments, to make sure that kids are being able to show what they know through different forms. And finally, the use of technology. Technology in writing improves student achievement, specifically with utilizing ability to publish. And when students feel that their work is being published in whatever form, their level of motivation and effort increases.
So the next step was to develop a survey and to survey as many of the staff as we could. The team created a survey tool. We surveyed all K to five staff and the English Language Arts teachers at the middle and the high school. And these are the results that we came up with. Current prep time is not adequate for planning and assessment. And as you see, at the elementary level, Dr. Caution presented that as well. And trying to find creative ways to increase the opportunities for planning, for grade level meetings, for looking at the standards, and for developing time for teachers to get together and work together. The survey results, people were looking for the reinstatement of reading coaches and reading support staff. They felt that having this level of support to look at the standards, to fine-tune teaching methodologies, to look at different ways to meet the needs of students and to support that instruction of differentiation within the classroom was of value. To expand and do our grade level maps and update grade level benchmarks. As you know, the curriculum standards change and evolve. We need to update and again vertically articulate between grade levels of elementary, middle, and high school. To establish common assessments. Dr. Caution mentioned some of this. We did, we are initiating the Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System. It's a standardized practice where we can look at comprehension, reading skills, phonological elements, and it's something that we can administer to everybody. It's short, and it gives a lot of feedback to kind of guide our instruction. Update materials and additional materials to support the balanced literacy. Dr. Caution explained the Reader's Workshop model, that methodology to explicitly teach reading strategies. We take those strategies for granted because we are readers. We need to be more transparent about teaching kids what it takes to read and comprehend. Professional development, we've already addressed that. As I mentioned at the beginning, we're working with the Tufts, with the literacy model, with the Reader's Workshop. Most of our professional development has been focused on that at the elementary, K through five at this point. We have personnel from Tufts that come and do coaching and modeling lessons at all four of the elementary schools, K through five, on a systematic schedule. They're doing the modeling, reteaching, providing teachers feedback, helping them level books. So that's an initiative that we saw. We saw that area of weakness, and we are working towards addressing that. And then teachers are clamoring for increased technology. Maybe not the going so far as having a smart board in every room, but the ability to have presentation formats within the classrooms, be it the projector and a computer setup, to use technology to enhance instruction. And also updating hardware on the computer labs so that we have more access to different types of technology.
In the Pierce Middle School, thank you. For the Pierce Middle School survey, some of the things that we saw as trends in the responses that teachers made was vertical articulation of the curriculum is needed. So we have some work to do in that area. They, the middle school has the luxury of common planning, and they feel like it is that it should be used to develop assessments to improve student achievement, that common planning should be used for sharing ideas and creating common assessments, projects, and activities. Currently, the English teachers meet every other week for a 45-minute meeting. During that time, we work on developing common assessments. We work on doing analysis of student work. And we also talk about strategies to improve instruction. So that's one piece that we are currently doing, and they feel like it's a valuable piece of student achievement. We also talked about passing writing samples from one grade to the next as a way to communicate where kids are in their level of writing. And that's something that we also incorporated last year. We started a portfolio system for open response. And the teachers also articulated that Empower Writing, or a similar program that provides consistency in language when teaching writing, is of value for student achievement. And all of the English teachers at the middle school are trained in Empower Writing, which is just a, simply an approach to teaching expository writing. And they have developed tools to make, to ensure that students are hearing some of the same language when talking about writing. At the high school, at the high school, teachers felt like prep time is not adequate for planning and assessment. They also felt that common planning time within the school day is not adequate. Currently, the English teachers don't have common planning time, so they don't have an opportunity to collaborate. Teachers were, this is something that I was interested in. Teachers are satisfied with the completion rate of writing, but they're not satisfied with the completion rate of reading. Kids are not doing their reading homework. So we need to ask why. They also felt like we need to look at the pool of texts that we offer at the school and maybe better reflect gender and cultural diversity, and that the pool of texts should also reflect a wide range of interests. That might be why they're not reading at home.
Next step was to conduct observations. Again, the team developed a tool to standardize what we're going to be looking at across the teachers who were observed. We wanted to look at practice in relation to the research. If best practice research said we had to vary the type of instruction, were we seeing that in the classrooms that we observed? So we looked at the types of instruction, whole group versus small group, teacher-directed instruction versus independent learning. Differentiation, what does that look like? Was it taking place? Were there clear objectives in the lessons that we observed? Were students engaged in the learning? Or was it all teacher doing the work? Was there evidence of intensive planning? Was the lesson well-developed? And was there integration for writing within that lesson? And finally, assessment. What types of assessment were taking place during that lesson? Informal, formal? How were the teachers gauging whether what they're teaching was being achieved by the students that they were seeing? So at the elementary, we found evidence of effective planning. The observers felt that the lessons were well-planned, were documented, they were following through from beginning to end, had a clear focus, that there was direct whole-group instruction. So there was a lot of whole-group instruction that they saw. There was informal assessment, and learning objectives were stated mostly orally. What we found a lack of evidence was differentiated instruction. At the elementary level, and sometimes the elementary, if you're teaching a phonics lesson, it lends itself to whole-group teaching. But we need to increase the opportunity for differentiated instruction and small-group practice. Posted learning objectives, that's another thing that we're getting much better at. Telling the students what they're going to learn and why before we start teaching them. So again, our teaching needs to be transparent. Formalizing the assessment. Stephanie indicated, you know, developing those common assessments, those benchmark assessments, and getting those in place so that we're measuring students consistently across. And then the integration of writing. Writing oftentimes at the elementary sometimes seems to be a separate piece rather than integrated with the reading. And if that is one of the measures that they're being tested on in MCAS, is that integrated writing in response to what they're reading, we have to provide that opportunity in our daily practice.
When looking at the classrooms within the English program at the Pierce Middle School, we saw some of common trends from elementary to middle. But what really stood out for the middle school was that we did see evidence, again, of informal assessment, that teachers were sort of assessing students, whether it be questioning techniques or moving around the room, observing what kids were doing. That there was effective planning, so there was clearly a purpose to the lesson and planned out in terms of activities and things to do. And finally, that there was student engagement, that kids were involved in terms of the lesson, that the teacher wasn't doing all of the work. But lack of evidence of differentiated instruction and again posted learning objectives, so that visual piece in terms of making it clear what the objective was. At the high school, very similar. We saw informal assessment. We saw effective planning, but a different piece. We saw technology at the high school. And at the high school, in every single English classroom, we have a smart board and projector. So teachers have access to utilize technology, and luckily, we saw that they were. So we see technology as a strength in terms of our observations. What we saw as a lack of evidence was that differentiated instruction piece, students engaged, so teachers were doing a lot of the work. Small-group instruction, so it was more whole-group instruction. And again, that posted learning objective piece. Because this has been a three-year journey, we have, we have definitely implemented some initiatives along the way. As we've learned and collected data, we have been responding to it. So we felt like it was important before making recommendations to articulate what we are currently doing to address some of our needs. Curriculum development, we saw in many areas as we did surveys that we... Curriculum development, we saw in many areas as we did surveys, that we really need to have a better documentation of our curriculum and better communication to articulate the curriculum K through 12. So we are trying to work on curriculum development, specifically, again, at the middle school when we do have that common planning time. We also, as Doree has mentioned, as well as Martha, we have started open-response initiatives, K through eight. The middle school has been using Empower Writing. We've met last year in a vertical team and started to develop common rubrics, six through eight, again, to make sure that we have this common language. We also did a professional development piece to get calibrated, to really understand what open response, what the MCAS is looking for in terms of open response. And finally, within those curriculum meetings, we are approximately once a month looking at student work. Teachers are bringing samples, a low, middle, and high-range sample, and we really look at the evidence, what are the strengths within the samples, what are the weaknesses, and, more importantly, how can we change instruction to make some improvement, or how can we support these kids?
And we've also... Stephanie has presented to the elementary leadership team their open-response initiative and some of the language and the common rubrics that they've developed. And we're working to provide a professional development option for our fourth and possibly fifth and possibly fourth-grade teachers, so that we can build, again, that vertical articulation. What is the expectation in sixth grade? Can we start some of that in the earlier grades, in fourth or fifth, to develop, again, that consistent language and expectations around what open responses are being looked at? So, again, we're not waiting until the total end of this. We're really looking to address those needs as we go through.
I think we also touched a little bit on some of the professional development that we've been doing to focus on some of our needs. The Tufts Initiative for the elementary level and the Reader's Workshop, Empower Writing for the middle school. And we, at the middle school, are really focusing on teaching all learners and looking at differentiated instruction methods. And a number of our workshops in the last couple of sessions have been focused on that. And two years ago, we were given a wonderful gift. We were sort of the focus for the Foundation for Education, and we received a great amount of materials that we could incorporate. And we considered some of the information we've learned through the... This time, the last three years, to figure out what it was that we wanted to focus on in terms of creating more resources. So K through eight, we've been looking at building classroom libraries. So we have been purchasing books to build classroom libraries, again, so that students can have some choice in their independent reading, as well as the Reader's Workshop model. At the high school level, we've examined new titles to incorporate into the curriculum, and we've purchased titles. At the middle school level, we established a publishing lab, a lab for students to come and work on writing, and also have an area where teachers can present with a projector and PowerPoint. And finally, we... At the time that we got the money, we chose to use some of the money to make sure all English classrooms had smart boards, so that there was a level playing field in terms of the technology that was used for the high school curriculum. Our recommendations to move forward, a huge focus needs to be on our vertical articulation, making sure that we have a clear understanding of our objectives from each level, which means that we need to better document what we do and make sure it makes sense. And with that, you need to have common assessments. If we have specific benchmarks, we then need to assess them. So developing common assessments, K through 12, and then having a vehicle to be able to analyze those assessments in a timely manner and be able to get that information back to teachers, because assessment should really drive instruction. Common planning time became something that kept coming up. In order to get all this stuff done and to move instruction forward and to move student achievement forward, common planning time is something that is really needed. And we see it at the middle school level and what we can do with it, and we'd like to make sure that we can think creatively of how we can incorporate it at the elementary and high school level. In terms of professional development, we still feel like the focus needs to be on differentiated instruction, getting some clear tools to make sure we're meeting the needs of all learners. And that, with that, making sure that students are engaged, that they're doing the work, that they're thinking, and the teachers aren't just giving the information to them. Assessment tools, looking at authentic assessments. And finally, technology, making sure we are incorporating technology in our instruction.
So additional resources, this is the painful part. At the elementary, we used our foundation money for establishing leveled libraries, and that's groups of texts that teachers can take back to the classroom at various levels to engage students in looking at genres, or fluency, or any of the reading elements. What we're finding the need now is to increase individual classroom libraries, and that would be the next step to really make this Reader's Workshop work alongside with the basal. Literacy coaches, as I stated earlier, the teachers feel that they need support in developing and enhancing their instruction around literacy and engaging students and finding alternate methods of dealing with students who are having difficulty. And again, technology, I mentioned before. Teachers really feel the need that technology is up and coming and that we need to have vehicles to use technology within the classroom, whether it be for publishing, whether it would be for presenting materials, whether it's for students to access the curriculum. Technology is a need that we see at the elementary level. I'd like to mention, as far as classroom libraries, we have the gift of getting library books from the East Milton Library, which we're dividing up by the four elementary schools, and those texts, I spent a couple of hours over there separating books, and we're going to deliver those to the schools, and they will be placed within the classroom. So it's a start, you know, getting really good children's literature in the hands of our classroom teachers, so that kids can have bags of books at their levels to read. It gives them choice. It gives them material to build their reading stamina, so that when they are faced with an MCAS-type assessment, they have the ability to read an entire passage without it being spoon-fed to them or being led through it. So, and, again, increasing nonfiction text. Technology would enhance that as well, having that ability to see different types of nonfiction materials, but those are the needs that we see. So thank you for your time, your energy, your attention.
Impressive. Mr. Huban?
I would agree. It is very impressive and very well-done. This is a very inwardly-looking curriculum review, and that's what it was intended to do. You mentioned literacy coaches. I think the best literacy coaches are parents. How do we get them more involved in being literacy coaches for their children?
Over the past few years, our principals have also led, and you saw Dr. Caution indicate that, we have had literacy nights and reading nights at the schools throughout the district, but I think that also has to be a focus, whether it be through newsletters, and Dr. Caution mentioned highlighting those areas of her school improvement, what is Reader's Workshop, what can you do to help your child at home? You know, the mantra always is, you know, "Read to your children, read to your children." It can be a cereal box, it can be an article out of a newspaper, but engaging in the process of reading is something that is so key, no matter what. Street signs as you're driving along. But we need to be very, very public about what it takes for parents to be involved in doing that.
If I might, Ms. Nephew, do you want to share with the public, School Committee, and Mr. Huban, the literacy night at Pierce?
Yes. This was the first year we did a literacy night in October. Christine Charbonneau, one of our amazing eighth-grade English teachers, had the idea to start the year with articulating to parents the importance of reading and getting involved. So we had a night that consisted, one of Sarah Holbrook, a poet, coming to present to the whole group. We then had every single English teacher out that evening helping. We had breakout sessions where teacher... Students and parents participated in activities connected to literature. That was about a half-hour session, and then they all went to a book fair to purchase books to finish things off. We had a great showing and a lot of energy and a lot of parent participation, and it was really wonderful to see eighth-grade boys having fun writing poems with their moms and dads, and we don't see that very often. So it's something that we will definitely do in the following years, and it's all about sending the message that reading for pleasure is such a huge component in student achievement, for vocabulary, for fluency, for building background knowledge, for comprehension. Simply reading for pleasure makes such an impact, and parents can have such an influence in making sure that happens.
I just want to piggyback on that point, because you had spoken earlier about the importance of building stamina in children's ability to read for longer periods of time. And I think in our homes, our busy lives that we lead, really carving out a niche where your children have an extended period of time where they're reading, either with you when they're younger or independently when they're older, but really, you know, giving them that time is such an important gift and another thing that we could add to the list of things that parents could do as coaches to their children, so. Since I have the mic, I'll just keep going. I have one more question. You talked about the vertical articulation, and that's so important today. Could you just explain that for people who may not understand, you know, help people understand a little bit more clearly about what exactly it is and the important role that it plays?
The vertical articulation of the curriculum is just looking at the standards that we have from one year to the next and really carving out benchmarks that make sense, so that, basically, there's a clear understanding of where students should be at the first-grade level and then how the second-grade level builds on that. And to allow that vertical articulation, you need documentation of it. You need teachers to understand what it looks like. They need to understand what the students did in first grade, if they're teaching second grade, and they also need to know what's going to happen in third grade in order to teach second grade well. So understanding the curriculum vertically is crucial for the success of student achievement. And so that's one piece that we really need to work on.
On the same subject. You mentioned having fourth and fifth-grade teachers looking at sixth-grade curriculum. Our teachers in Massachusetts are certified at different levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, but I'd go so far as to say, if you don't know what's happening, two or three grades ahead and two or three grades behind, you're not really equipped to doing what you need to do, especially in area, if you're doing differentiated instruction, for instance, and you have a very heterogeneous classroom. How do we get that conversation going across the very natural boundaries of K, five, six, eight, and nine, 12, so that a fourth-grade teacher knows what's happening at seventh grade, seventh-grade teacher knows what's happening at fourth grade, and at 10th grade or 11th grade? Because, I mean, it's very natural to be pigeonholed into your particular world of middle school or high school or elementary school. But how do we sort of break those divides to get geographic as well, they're on different sides of town? I mean, how do you break those divides to get these people talking to each other so that they know how to... What they're looking for in a classroom?
I think the first step is developing a curriculum documentation tool that is consistent K through 12. And what that allows is a common language in terms of how we document our curriculum. So a 10th-grade teacher looking at a first-grade curriculum understands exactly the setup, how it's written, and can sort of maneuver through that curriculum fairly easily. That's the first step. It doesn't have the conversation piece to it, but it allows us to begin to communicate what things look like K to 12. And then, I think that the piece of the communication also is a focus on professional development as well. But first, starting with that common language and how we communicate our curriculum in documentation form.
And just...
No, that's right, after Martha. You go ahead, Martha.
We have had some opportunities to have cross-grade-level meetings with fifth-grade teachers and sixth-grade, so opening up that time, you know, within the school day to have those sessions where fifth and sixth-grade teachers could meet, or, and they have it at the... Fourth and fifth, and so it's building in those types, being creative, to build in those areas where we can have those conversations.
And I just wanted to make two points. When we have talked at this table about the Mass Insight, the Advanced Placement Grant, and, again, they added English to their study of math and science, the whole thrust is to Mr. Pavlicek's point, that sixth and seventh-grade teachers hadn't... Didn't know what the end game was. So all of the training, you can't... My analogy is always, you can't decide in the 10th grade, "I'm going to take an advanced placement class." And so to work with the sixth and seventh-grade teachers on this pre-AP training, it doesn't matter... It's not saying that every student is going to be enrolled in the advanced placement, but to Dr. Pavlicek's point, if you have the sixth and seventh-grade teachers understanding the 10th and 11th and the 12th-grade curriculum and what the end game is and how they're building the foundation and the skills, that's what's going to raise student achievement. And I also sat here and said, the individuals watching, the public, might say about this common planning time, why does the elementary and the high school not have the common planning time that the middle school has? The middle school, when it turned from a junior high school to a middle school, the common planning time was built in the schedule. And then, common planning time should definitely be under additional resources, because common planning time is expensive, because it's time. And if you look at the elementary school, my analogy is, we have one art teacher for 1,800 children, so that we've brought down our specialists at the elementary level to just meet the contract. But when we had two art teachers and more than one music teacher for the four elementary schools, you could schedule those individuals into the different schools and create the common planning time of all the third-grade teachers or all the fourth-grade teachers, but we've brought this down to two phys ed teachers. And again, I think it's valuable for the public to understand. In neighboring communities, they have every other day a half-day or a half-day once a month. That's for common planning time. But again, that's not time and learning, and it's extra time, and you have to add extra days to the teacher's contract. And at the high school, again, when we look at the schedule, we have to work on that to find common planning time, but, again, that the teachers want that common planning time, they want to meet with their peers. Again, you're halfway there when they're looking for that kind of scheduling.
I want to bring up the topic of differentiated instruction. First, I'd like someone to explain it to those that don't understand what it is. And then, you know, over the past several years, we have made great efforts to take students that previously perhaps went out of district for their schools to bring them back in-house. And as a result of that, one would think that the teachers who are teaching to those children need some additional skills, which would fall into this category. But additionally, perhaps, you know, the type of learner you are sort of plays into this. So to me, it's sort of like this big Rubik's Cube, that a teacher constantly, whatever topic they're teaching, has got to be moving around. And I guess my question is, you know, if you were to identify three top things that would move us along in... With regard to differentiated instruction, which is found in lack of evidence at all three levels, what would you suggest be done?
Well, I can speak to the elementary, and I think we've already started that with the Reader's Workshop model. That model allows you to provide experiences for children at the level that they are and move them to the next level through that guided practice. So, for example, after you teach a mini lesson on a specific skill, and that would be a whole-group lesson, you then send the students back to practice with materials that is at that level. It's a natural differentiation. It's a natural differentiation because they're using materials at their level. You might, if they've got a little bit of mastery, you might push the notch a little bit to get them to move to the next level. But then you, as a teacher, can go around and monitor that practice and see whether they are obtaining that skill or they're ready to move to the next level. So, that's a natural way to differentiate right within the reading workshop. And it's differentiation oftentimes gets confused with just meeting the needs of our special educators. And it's not. It's really within the confines of the classroom, looking at learners for methodologies, are they visual learners, are they auditory learners? And really giving students opportunity to learn in different ways so that you're not the teacher talking at the students all day long. Do those visual learners have visual representations of what you're trying to teach on the board? Do they have something to look at, something to model? So, it's really providing for all of our learners, whether it's special ed or our high achievers, you know, giving them materials that aren't boring or redundant and really stretching the needs for all learners. It's difficult. It requires an inordinate amount of planning time, but it is doable. And Reader's Workshop is just one example how it really just plays right into that role at the elementary level.
I think similarly, looking at models that sort of help foster differentiated instruction, an example of that would be literature circles at the middle and high school level, having a number of books that students get to choose from. Some differentiation is also looking at interest as well. So, giving some student choice, having students play different roles within a lit circle, again, fostering some of their learning strengths, whether they're a visual learner, again, kinesthetic. So, thinking about different ways that they can access the text and show what they know. And so, I think to move forward in differentiated instruction, it is sort of thinking thoughtfully about planning, supporting thoughtful planning and giving time for thoughtful planning, having conversations with teachers, again, that common planning time. But when teachers share what they're doing, it makes it feel less daunting to figure out how to differentiate every lesson. So, being able to share some of the tools that people already have established so teachers don't feel as overwhelmed is also a huge piece of it. And also focused professional development, constantly providing new ideas and new tools for teachers.
Again, on the same topic, there's a big difference too between at the elementary level where a teacher has 25 kids all day long, we hope 25 kids all day long. And at the high school level where they're teaching five different classes and, you know, have 150 students and it's easier to know where the natural skills of 25 students are. It's hard to know all the names of 150 students, you know, in the course of a day. So, differentiating at the high school is a very different animal. And the middle school is sort of halfway in the middle with teams where it's not quite the 150, but it's not the 25 either. How does the professional development that we're doing sort of address those differences in the high school and the, you know, I hear the elementary school with the reading circles, but even the same idea at the high school, how would you even know how to break 150 kids up over a day into five different groups of groups?
Well, I think you can look at differentiation in different ways. I do, amazingly, the teachers do get a sense of where the students are. They utilize a lot of assessments and within the first term, I feel like they do have a good sense of the levels within their classes. They're very talented teachers. But I think also looking at how we present material and how students engage in material. So, thinking, again, one of the things we didn't see was documentation of objectives visually. So, for a visual learner, if they are hearing the objective, they may not, it might have gone in and right out. So, thinking about some strategies for instruction, again, maybe not addressing every level of students' ability, but thinking about the types of learners within the classroom and providing multiple experiences so students have equal access to the curriculum.
Ms. Nancy Jones, a question just to follow up on the differentiated instructions. What would teachers say if you surveyed them about what the obstacles are for them with differentiated instruction? Not that, for you to make a guess, but just some curious what you think.
No, well, that did come up, you know, because differentiated instruction came up in the survey. Time for planning.
Time for planning, common planning?
Common planning, working as a grade level. Not having as many tools in the toolbox that they feel is necessary, again, under professional development. I think the literacy, the balanced literacy approach has helped that within the reading block. But again, are we looking towards math? Not that we're talking about math tonight, but again, the tools to do that and what does that look like? And materials. You know, we've made a great start, as I said before, with having the leveled library and the opportunity to provide texts at all different levels and all different genres to pull from, but we've just scratched the surface. It takes a lot more materials to do that. So, top two, I would give you top three, common planning time, materials and tools in the toolbox.
Okay. The other question I had, go ahead, is, and Mary, you probably already do this, but when you were talking about different things that teachers do and they can talk at common planning time, what about the grade one teacher who I know sent home a questionnaire to parents about what their child's learning style was using multiple intelligences? What a great idea. Is that shared with the 10th grade? I mean, like, how do you get best practices from teachers across levels, across elementary, middle and high school? The fourth grade teacher that did Shakespeare plays with the kids at Colly Cott, certainly the 10th grade teacher doing Shakespeare right now appreciated that. The pajama days of reading, the switcheroo that Dorey talked about, all those really great practices that our teachers are already doing. How do they get shared, exchanged, notified, made sense of?
With these professional development days, in the past, we've had townwide grade level meetings where we've been able to get substitute coverage for all of the grade three teachers and bring them together. And again, a very expensive model, but providing those opportunities to have grade level or cross-grade level meetings would be a vehicle to do that with.
And there is a scheduled time each month for principals' meetings and to speak to our principals, they don't use them for housekeeping. They use them for sharing sessions, they pick best, select best practices, they have teacher representatives at these meetings. So, again, every minute is utilized. And again, to your questions tonight and to this presentation, English Language Arts is the foundation of the school system. And so, to the work, and I think that you have to recognize that these self-evaluations and these observations, to Mr. Hubin's point, were done by the staff. So, they looked at themselves and having this over the last three years, again, it's a work in progress, but you can check off the gains that we're making and the areas that we still have to work on.
Can I ask one more question? The libraries, the school libraries, how does that play into this in terms of kids' access to them, the materials, after school, I mean, where are we at with our school libraries?
Within the schools, not the leveled libraries.
Yeah, not the classroom where the leveled, but in-
Right. Our library, teachers at the elementary level are working very diligently to incorporate the standards into what they do and sharing good literature to support those standards. Again, it's only one period a week.
Right.
It's very limited, but, you know, we are, our librarians are teachers. You know, they're really working with the students to really develop that love of literature and to expose students to as many different types of literature as possible within that limited amount of time.
So, they, elementary get one period a week of library, middle school gets?
It is, it's not a structured time. The English teachers access the library. Oftentimes, monthly, they will bring classes to take out books for independent reading. So, they're accessing the library on a regular basis, but there is no structured instruction.
Just one final thought. You are asking, you're saying that there's a need for classroom libraries. I'm sure that there are people at home that are watching this show or a rerun of this show at some point that have many children's books in their home that if, they might very well be willing to donate. And if there's some way that you can say that they can contact you, they're fighting for the microphone.
And for that, Martha, do you want to-
I'm so glad that you mentioned that because we, in part of our literacy night and thinking about how we could build classroom libraries and build our library and the text that we provide, we have been asking parents, we've sent letters home, email blasts, in the bulletin in terms of asking for books that families are no longer using, that we can definitely use them in our classrooms. And we actually have gotten boxes and boxes of books. So, we are very grateful, but we will definitely take more.
And at the elementary?
And I had the opportunity, Superintendent Gormley invited me to present to the PTO presidents and I asked them as well to, because I'm, my office overlooks the books are fun bin in the back of Colly Cott Cunningham and I see parents lugging boxes of book to throw them in there. I said, "No, no, bring them to us first." So, I petitioned the PTO presidents to put it out and publish it that we will also welcome books into the classrooms to be distributed. And, you know, we will screen them if they're not appropriate or literature that we feel should be in the, we'll donate those.
We're going to identify a drop-off day and night townwide because we said a lot of middle school parents-
Might have elementary.
-will pick the day to go to the elementary.
Right.
Because when you're through with the books, they're for somebody younger. So, we're going to, the PTO presidents, we're going to identify a day a month at every school, have the custodians ready all day, all night for books to be dropped off.
And this would involve, you know, French immersion students as well. I'm sure in the primary grades, there are books that French immersion parents have that they're no lying being used, so they can bring those as well to support those libraries. So, we thought that was a very valuable way to get more books into our classrooms.
Great. Thank you.
Outstanding.
Great job. Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing that. Wonderful.
Next, if we might go out of the agenda and invite to the table our athletic director and physical education director, Steve Traister, and Kate Sumner, parent volunteer, extraordinary.
Hey, time you want to come.
So, Steve is here tonight to give you an athletic, if this is all right, Mrs. Kelly, I'd schedule an athletic update. Steve Traister and Matt Gillis presented to Finance Subcommittee and they're going to present tonight. But I've asked Kate Sumner to come tonight to give you a little update on our, the progress of our banner program. So, Kate, if you want to roll that out tonight and then we won't hold you up.
Well, first, actually, I'd like to start by saying once again, thank you to all. Thank you to all of the businesses, organizations and families that so strongly came through last year, it was almost a year ago, when we started the first indoor banner program. So, a big thank you. That was a sold-out program and we'll be renewing those all in June. But it's been about a year and I'm here tonight to talk about a new initiative, which is going to be the outside banner program. We're going to have two opportunities for pole banners. I think you have a copy of them, but they are basically going to house our Wildcat Paw and have proud sponsor. And then, we're going to give the opportunity to these businesses and organizations to purchase one with their company logo. They're going to be distributed throughout the parking area in the outdoor sports complex here at Milton High School, as well as we're going to have some very large three by 10 banners inside Brooks Field on the big light posts. So, we have a limited amount of opportunities here, but great ones just the same. And if anybody is interested, they can contact me directly at kate@gofullcontact.com or at 866-748-3700. Steve is going to also have the flyers at all of the sports events in the Copeland Fieldhouse all winter, as well as down at Yulin Rank for our hockey teams. We will also have it out on email blast and at the front office and at the entrance to the fieldhouse downstairs if anybody is interested to pick up a flyer for more information.
I'd just like to thank Kate for all her work in going forward and Superintendent Gormley and her administration and the school committee for letting us bring this to the town and again, to the selectmen for letting us go forward with this. This is the second part, like Kate said, of our, one of our big donations and all the fundraising that we've been doing and this will hopefully stagger the inside banners that go up in the fieldhouse and hopefully generate a nice revenue flow of advertising and give back to the community. And I know for a fact that people have used and looked and gone in to look at the banners in the fieldhouse and have contacted those companies. So, I've seen it work firsthand. But this is a great opportunity. Her initiative and her company have done a great job designing and thinking how these will benefit the outside and they, as much as they classed up the inside of the Copeland Fieldhouse, I think these will look extraordinary outside as well.
And if I might, for the public's benefit, it comes to mind last January when we didn't have the funding and Bern Lovely said, "We can't have spring sports without sufficient funding." Remember, Mr. Lovely, when you said if you didn't have funding? And so, we now have a fundraising plan for both clubs and activities and athletics. And this has been no easy feat. Kate Sumner had to go in front of the selectmen and work with the subcommittee at Town Hall to have these banners approved. And I would share with you, when I watched the selectmen's meeting, select person Kathy Fagan-Bauer said, "How many of you sold?" And Ms. Sumner said, "I haven't sold any, I was waiting for your approval." And so, this is the rollout of the program tonight. And for everyone to understand, and they'll understand better after Steve Traister's presentation, that these are important funds to really make the Milton Public School Athletic Program at Milton High School run. And we value and we appreciate every single fundraising dollar. Kate Sumner is the parent of three children who have gone to the Milton Public School. She has a senior and she is a volunteer. And she has a committee working with her on Saturday mornings if anyone's interested. They can contact Kate, but Kate is a parent volunteer, just as the parents who ran the golf tournament, the Walk-a-Thon parents, one of those people at our table tonight. And they're all volunteers who give selflessly and we couldn't operate these programs without you. So, thank you.
And Kate, I'm just going to give your email address again. It's kate@gofullcontact.com, correct? And phone number again is 866-748-3700.
Correct. Or through the school, the athletic director, Steve, will have us be contacted as well and through the front office.
So, s-traster@miltonps.org.
Right. Or the athletic office phone and like Kate said, these will be at all events in the fieldhouse, they'll be in my office, they'll be at the front office and we'll have them at the home hockey games down at Yulin as well.
It's also on the website.
I didn't talk to anybody prior to the selectmen meeting last Thursday. I've contacted several people today. All very positive feedback. Thank you very much. They will go quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly?
Thank you, Kate. Kate, thank you very much. I just have one question, well, not one question, actually a comment. The visibility that an advertiser would get on these particular banners is amazing because our buildings are used so much-
Yes, it is.
-throughout the year. It is amazing.
It's correct. And as well, the height of the banners, even the ones in the field, which are going to be outstanding because there's only a few opportunities in there for those who do get in early, but you'll be able to see those just as well as the ones in the parking area because of the height coming into the properties. So, those have extremely, you know, great visibility as well, in and outside of the field.
And the one other thing that we had talked about, that because this is the middle of the year, these first banners would be up through next school year, is that correct?
These will be actually sold within the next couple of months. They'll be designed and they'll all be installed. It'll be one big reveal in the spring. As soon as the snow melts and we get the machinery and to get the hardware and installation of the banners up, we're talking March, they will stay up for a period of 12 months.
Oh, so it will just go till the following March?
Correct.
Got it.
And to Mrs. Kelly's point, we're going to add that to brochure that was missing from the brochure. When we get that out, we're going to add it.
It's already in the-
You added it?
Yes. Correct. And the insides banners, they will be renewable in June of this year and they will go for a period of 12 months every year thereafter.
Got it.
That was the one year and a half-
Great.
-last year. But it will be a one-year, 12-month period from, you know, June, they'll be up at the end of the summer for the beginning of the school year and they'll run- be up at the end of the summer for the beginning of the school year, and they'll run for a period of 12 months every year.
Great, thank you.
And when Kate Sumner's daughter graduates this year, we're going to be looking for somebody to take over the banner program, because it's now integral to the athletic program at Milton High School.
There are several of us here that don't have children in the schools anymore, and we still volunteer, so.
I have been told that once before by somebody in this room. I would be more than happy to help out as much as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you so much. And they're so beautiful. They are great. Beautiful.
Thank you, Kate. Hey, I don't know where you want me to start. Athletics this year, we're just beginning our spring season, I mean, our winter season this week. Basketball, boys will be at home on Friday, the girls will be away. Wrestling will also be at home on Friday. And our boys and girls hockey teams, boys, which will be at home on Saturday night at Yulin, and our track teams will start next week. So we're ready to go in full swing in the winter. We had a successful fall season, and we're looking forward to that. And I'll let Matt start off with the overall athletic budget as we're going right now.
Good evening. The school committee, you know, the folks at home may not be able to see it, but they're looking at a two-page summary of our athletic program. There's a total column on the left with a description of each item, and then there's three funding sources on the first page, and then actually what we've spent year-to-date, or that we know we're going to spend, because contractually we're obligated to do those things. You'll see that 30% of the money comes from the general fund. That's money that folks voted town meeting, and folks in town know that that money is largely from the property taxes. And, you know, the state kicks in a little, probably about 17% of the minimum required spending. Milton spends a little above the minimum, so it's a little less than that amount. The revolving funds, which we just heard the great news from Kate Sumner, and how we raise money from the bands through advertising, that's also where we put the user fees, any donations, like the golf tournament, the walk-a-thon, things of that nature. And any gate receipts for ticket sales, football, basketball, which is largely in the fall and winter, we have gate receipts. There aren't too many gate receipts for the spring sports. And then last but not least, we have the student funding, which accounts for about 9% of the program. And largely, the students buy their own uniforms. They buy some extras. And some of the expenses will reflect what they have to buy in order to raise money. For example, the girls soccer team, you know, paid about almost $6,000 for the cookie dough that they sold in order to turn a profit. You know, if you're going to sell something, you usually have to have the expense first. On that page also, you'll see that there's a revenue total, not including the beginning balance. Both the revolving funds and the student funds can carry over each year, because of the way the money comes in. And it's a different picture. We're looking at today about a $750,000 program, but without the beginning balances, we'd be looking at $615,000. I went back and looked at it over the last three years, both the revolving fund and the student fund have seen some steady growth of a few thousand dollars each year. So there's good management and good projection in the programs overall, or, I guess in the case of last year, good fundraising that came in to kind of save the program. Because if you spend the beginning balance down quickly, that's one-time money, and you're running in a deficit in the upcoming years. So if you look at the second page, you can see all the expenses associated. We've got the total expenses projected again, the general fund, about 34% of the total expenses. The revolving funds, still a lion's share, about 60%. And then the student funds, which are about 6%. So there's two ways to look at the program. The program with the beginning balance, and we would, we'd end the year just fine, or the program without the beginning balance, and we'd come up a little short in both the revolving fund and the student funds. So we're being careful as to how we plan, the way Steve can talk about how he schedules the games and practices for things, as well as looking at consistent sources of revenue. And, you know, I know Kate Sumner got applause, but, you know, for creating a program that's going to bring in theoretically close to $100,000 a year, you know, after year one for each of these programs, that's pretty impressive, and saves all the students in town to pay the users' fees and all the taxpayers a little bit of money. And, you know, that doesn't happen in too many places. Milton's, we're pretty lucky to have someone like Kate. And I'll turn it back over to Steve, unless there's any questions on the financials at the moment.
And again, we're in this situation, because of the donations last year, and we were able to bring some forward. And also, we did, unfortunately, this year, raise the users' fees to shorten that gap in the fundraising amount. So the users' fees did go up this year, and in local communities, we're on the higher end, and we're reaching a breaking point on that. But...
When Steve says a breaking point, at some point, the fee gets too high, and you start to lose participation. And this is most commonly seen in school lunch programs, where if the price goes up 50 cents, the food service director can tell you exactly how many kids stop participating, you know, in just a few weeks. It's a little harder to see in a sports program, because they enroll three times a year for the seasons. So that's what Steve's talking about, where the price break would be.
And our users' fees are $250, or most programs, the boys and girls hockey program, they are $500. We do have the free and reduced lunch capability that people self-report, and they will not have to pay the fee. There's also, people are playing, using payment plans and things like that. So there are ways to get around the users' fee, and we are able to work with people and students, because we don't want to have anybody not be able to participate based strictly on users' fees. And unfortunately, sometimes you can't tell people who aren't coming to the door, or aren't coming to my office, in finding how many people are not participating due to that. But we are generating revenue this year. We had a decent fall in gate receipts. Some of these things are also, they tend to fluctuate from year to year. The gate receipts, the users' fees, the interest in the teams, the fundraising that goes on. So some of these numbers are not always consistent from year to year with that. I don't know.
Mr. Lovely?
Yep.
Just a question.
My question.
Sorry. I'm just looking at the fundraising, and I noticed the, there are student accounts on the first page, which I gather is the revenue generating page. And noticeable in its absence relative to its cost, particularly for ice time, is, for example, boys hockey and girls hockey.
Right. And this, on the front page, this is just the money that's coming and been projected, and anything that's been done this fiscal year. So as of a couple weeks ago, when we did this report, the girls, most of the winter teams had not purchased or done a lot of fundraising. That's why it's not on there.
So the expectation is that each team will do some sort of fundraising?
Yeah, that they will be doing it. Absolutely.
Good question.
Boys hockey just purchased new varsity uniforms, and their varsity uniforms in the past will go down to the JVs, and we are, there will be some fundraisers to help offset that cost.
Now, in the recent years, there's been some back and forth, as I understand it, about the interrelationship between the boosters, and the, I think the boosters have historically raised a substantial amount of money. There's some new leadership in the boosters this year. Are we still, are the boosters still doing the, some of the uniforms where they ask the kids to pay for half, they pay for half? I mean, is this fundraising integrated with the boosters?
We're just starting to get in. And like you said, the boosters, for the last couple of years, have been asked to help fill our gap on the athletic side, like just getting us to be on the fields and courts themselves. We are now working with the boosters, and they're working on their membership and their fundraising campaign. And they have stated at the last two booster meetings, that they will be able to help out the team. So with formal requests from the teams, this fall, the girls soccer and boys soccer did purchase uniforms. At that point, the boosters hadn't, they were just reorganizing, so they were not able to get into that. And then since then, we've met, boys hockey has purchased uniforms, girls basketball, who have not received them in a long time. They are making formal requests for the boosters to help out, and the boosters are going to boost and help those teams.
May I speak to Mr. Lovely's point? May I elaborate on that point?
Let me, can I just?
Sure.
Just to finish the thought, the boosters, historically, the strength of the boosters has been, we have a boosters club that supports all sports. And what I want to make sure is that the integration of the booster program and fundraising in general, either by specific teams or specific groups, doesn't allow for the degeneration into a separation of fundraising groups by sport. Because that, one of the real strengths of Milton, for as long as I've been involved in sports and the boosters, is that we don't have a football boosters and a hockey boosters. What we have is a boosters club that benefits all of our sporting programs, and I would hate to see that in any way, right, disaggregate, if you will.
And so, and to your point, Mr. Lovely, that all of these efforts go back, my phrase is, the boosters are going to return to boosting all sports. So, again, for the last two years, they really gave all of their money to make the athletic program work. So you have experience in with them sharing uniforms and the cost of uniforms, and Mr. Traister will tell the duration of uniforms and how long they last. But we do not want, as Mr. Lovely said, splinter groups out there raising funds for different sports, so that one group might be more capable than another group. We want to bring it all back to the boosters.
And the boosters are going through the process, the other important thing is, the boosters are going through the process of qualifying as a 501(c)(3), which is, for some reason, historically not happened. And that's important for purposes of attracting tax-deductible donations, which technically contributions to individual sports fundraising are not. So it's really important to...
It's a good point.
And I know they're meeting, I think they met last night, actually.
Yes, they did.
First Monday of every month.
Yep.
That's no way to say I'm not thrilled with all the efforts everybody's making. I just want to make sure we don't lose what is really the...
Right. And that's what we're trying to get back.
And we made a commitment.
...of our fundraising has been for many years.
And we made a commitment to the public and to the parents, that we have these identified fundraising efforts in the boosters, and we do not want to use the students to be out there fundraising separately. We want to bring it back, so that it's something reasonable for all families. I'll tell you, last Saturday, Barbara Kelly Wright was here. She had her team do a can and bottle drive, and $500 they made in one morning, with a can and bottle drive in front of Milton High School.
I brought $100 worth of bottles myself. I've been waiting to see the sign hanging out there. Is there, is there a...
Schedule.
Getting them out of my garage. Is the, is all of the fundraising by teams, I guess I'd ask you this, Matt, and maybe you don't know yet, but is all of the fundraising, maybe Steve knows, is all of the fundraising monies, the cash that's raised, run through the student accounts? In other words, do we monitor the cash? In other words, it's not being held by individuals or private accounts?
No, it comes right through, goes through the student accounts, either by check or by cash, for their fundraising. And again, like Matt said earlier, like the girls soccer team, they went out and sold all the cookie dough. It all comes back, and then what they had to pay out for their...
I missed that.
Say again?
The cookie, never mind.
Yeah, yeah.
The...
So it did all come in, it did all come in, and then the invoice went out. And so all the monies were in the student accounts and the individual accounts to send that out. So it all does go right through their accounts.
Thank you.
Kelly? Just with regard to the fundraising, so all, like if someone's writing out a check for a fundraiser for the soccer team, it would be written out to the Milton Public Schools or the Milton Athletic Department?
Yep, MHS Athletics, just like you would for the users' fee or anything like that.
So basically, we want to make sure that that's the protocol that's used across the board.
Absolutely.
Right.
And then it comes through, my office goes through, proper accounts payable and all that, and then it comes out on the other end.
And then the one other thing that I just want to point out or reiterate, as was mentioned earlier, this is an athletic program that hasn't changed dramatically in terms of the number of sports that are offered over many years, correct?
Correct.
That now, the general fund only contributes 30% to, and all of the rest is basically fundraised.
Right, right.
Through one means or another, gate fee, or whatever it happens to be. But it's non-general fund sources. And it'd actually be interesting at some point to look back, you know, eight years and see where we were in terms of that whole dynamic. But it's a tribute to those that put in all the fundraising efforts to maintain the sports program that we have. And thank you.
Can I, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I just want to, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I do have concern about, we have the boosters fundraising, we have the teams fundraising, and then we have people doing the walk, the golf tournament, the banners. And I think we had talked last year, Mary, about trying to coordinate some of that, and then that kind of got away from us?
Well, not really. We have the three events.
I'm just trying to be polite.
Well, we have the three events. We have the walk-a-thon, the golf tournament, and the banners for athletics.
Right.
And then, we have sent a very strong message to the coaches through Steve Traister to pull back on the individual team fundraising. And they're making that attempt this year, and we're going to continue to pull back, while, as Mr. Lovely said, the boosters are just coming back. When you think of it, we took, we had to use all of the boosters' money the last two years to make the program run. They are completely autonomous now, and they're going to be working with Steve Traister and the coaches, so that the coaches and the students don't have to do the individual fundraising. And our goal is to move away from all of that.
Right.
So we're trying to work on a need basis, not a want basis, but because we are still in this three-year cycle where we did not have that, in order to get the uniforms that the soccer teams needed, in order to get these uniforms that the ice hockey team needed and the girls' basketball, there was some fundraising and there is some fundraising. And the teams do still buy extra things that they do have. They still are buying some of their supplies. We're still cutting corners and filling in gaps with the teams supplying extra balls, extra pitching machines, stuff like that. Now, this year, because we raised the users' fees, they're not paying for their non-league, they are, they're being funded for their non-league games, they're not having to pay those individually, either the transportation or the officials, or their scrimmages. You know, I think I mentioned the other day, hockey, JV hockey has been kind of out of it in terms of practice time. We've increased that because of the fee. I mean, they're paying $500. They can't be just playing an 18 game. So we've increased their games to up to 22 with a couple scrimmages, plus getting Sunday night ice time. So we're trying to give back there. But the teams do still, in this period that we've been in, need to fundraise on their own to help fill the gaps and make the corners that we're cutting.
Right. So my point, though, is that we talked in the spring about doing an organizational flow chart almost of who was raising what when. So when the girls were out selling the cookie dough more power to them, they said, "I can't go back and ask for money for the walk. I can't go back and ask for money for this." So it really is, we need to be planful about who we're asking when for what. And it's very hard to say to the coaches, "Sorry, you can't sell your cookie dough," but if we're trying to raise big money...
That's our goal.
Right. But I'm just saying, I'm acknowledging it's hard to do it, but it still really does need to be worked on. And I still want to say that the $250 fee, I still think is very high. I think we're the third highest on the social war, if that's correct, from what I read in the paper, if that was correct. I don't know if it was correct or not. We're the third highest. It's not the worst. But 250, for some families, is still a lot of money.
$500 for hockey.
If you play more than one sport, or you have more than one kid. So I really, I just want to put it out there, 250 is a lot for kids to pay for sports. And I don't know what we can do about it, but I think we need to try to think about something else to do about it.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I agree. Well, on the pages we have here, we're talking about the numbers in broad terms. I want to ignore the initial balances of the funds for a minute, because we should maintain those. We shouldn't be dipping into one-time money. These programs should sustain themselves from year to year. And if you do that, we're looking at on this first page about $615,000 in projected revenue, or budgeted revenue, and about $650,000 in expenses, for about a $40,000 deficit, ignoring the initial balances in the accounts. Now, you had mentioned, Matt had mentioned, that some of the revenue was not here yet, because we're not projecting revenue from various different things. Are all the expenses here, is my question?
All the expenses are in to date, and all the revenues are in to date. However, we did not project the revenues for the student fundraising, you know, so we don't have the winter and fall revenues there. So that deficit should theoretically decrease, because we anticipate the teams will raise some money. We just didn't put a budgeted expectation on the students at this point. You know, we wanted to see how it shakes out, and Steve was telling me, the boosters were in the process of being revived, and that we were going to transition, and we were hoping to transition that out, take some of the direct responsibility off the students. I mean, it doesn't feel great, and the only silver lining is, you know, the kids get the real value of enterprise. You know, okay, you want new uniforms? Well, you're going to have to find a... Well, you're going to have to find a way to raise the money, you're going to have to do the work, you're going to have to produce, and then you get to, then you actually get to go buy them. So, they get the satisfaction of that responsibility, but it, it doesn't feel like it's something you want to put on kids 13 to 17 years of age. So, we didn't, we didn't reflect that here. So, when we update this, you know, in February, and we've got the winter season almost over, that, that shortfall should decrease, and then it should decrease again in the spring, and it, it should balance out. But, you know, as of where we are actual to date, you know, because we can't make the kids fundraise, this is the worst-case scenario.
My point was that although the revenue is not final...
Correct.
The expenditures are what we expect to expend...
Projected.
Yeah.
Right, they're projected. I mean, we haven't paid it, we've paid for it.
No, no, I mean, but they're a budget expenditure. We don't expect there'll be more expenditures that will pop up, except possibly in, as offset to some of the fundraising.
Except the student accounts.
Right, yes.
So, I'm confused, though, because it's $41,000 here.
Right.
So, what does that really mean in terms of what's left to raise for the rest of the year?
If no, if no money was raised for the rest of the year and all money budgeted to expend was expended, it would be $41,000 for the rest.
So, what would that mean in terms of sports programs?
Well, that, that would mean that, that our, that our, you know, fund balances would decrease. We started with two fund balances. If you go back to the first page, one of $81,000, one of $46,000.
I see.
So, we...
It would come out of that $81,000.
Right. Eighty-one and the forty-six, yeah.
Eighty-one and forty-six.
Eighty-one, forty-six.
You don't want to be doing that. You don't want to be moving into your fund.
Right, but, we're not in the same position we were last year. That's what I'm trying to ask.
No, we're not. No, because we were able to bring some forward because we did such a good job last year with the threat of where we were last year.
That's all I want to...
Yeah, and I don't think we're in, in any threat of having any of the programs canceled before the year is over. I'm, I'm not saying that at all.
Can you write that?
I'll repeat it. I, I don't foresee any threat of, of not being able to fund the spring sports programs.
Mr. Hubin?
I know we're looking at a big picture here, and Steve was told to make it short, but, you know, I think some things get glossed over in the end, and I really like to bring out something that come up in the finance subcommittee where Steve, in working with his coaches, has been able to trim some of the expected expenses, particularly for the golf, the golf team.
Ski team.
The ski team, the Blue Hills, been able to cut back on the expenses that have been budgeted and are able to use that to, to enhance other areas within the athletic department. And I, I give him great kudos for that.
Would you, would you mind, Mr. Hubin, will you share those and give credit?
Yeah, just in a couple, I mean, and it goes out to where we live and the surroundings that we have. Our golf coach, Kevin Taylor, has been able to have a nice rapport with Wallaston and Granite Links. And Granite Links and Wallaston has always given us a little time to have some of our matches there in what we budgeted, usually in the $3,000 to $3,500 range at Ponkapog for our greens fees of every time we practice or every time we host a match, we have to pay for those. But we've been able to work it out where Wallaston Country Club has given us more practice time and more dates to have matches, so we're lessening our green fees at Ponkapog and able to save. I believe this year it was just under $1,200.
So, that's huge. That's Ori Hills and Wallaston Golf Club do that.
Right, and, right. And, and our golf coach has had a nice rapport with them. On the ski, we're lucky enough, a couple of years ago, we had to spend, when Blue Hills was shut down, we were going out to Ski Ward more often, which is out in Shrewsbury, so we were busing and paying the, the members to go out there. We also are fortunate to have a, a, a lot of young men and women who are on our ski team work at Blue Hills, so they already have a ski pass, or they might have season passes because they like to enjoy it up there on their own as well. So, we're, we're kind of saving some money there. And I think I brought up in the subfinance committee, the Wellesleys or the people around, they're paying to bus their students every day to Blue Hills for practice, they're, they're busing them there, plus paying the lift fee and the chair fee or the season pass for each one of their students every day, every night, or for the season pass, then going to Ski Ward and doing it there as well. So, because of where we live and our opportunities here, because of some of the efforts of our coaches, when I was the football coach, we weren't, we were trying to cut back on how many helmets we bought, not trying to get into a safety issue at all, but I, I think I mentioned the other day that for football, they do get recertified every year, and after a year of eight to 10 years, they're, they're not going to be, they're going to come back rejected, or if they get damaged enough. And we were able to cut back and not spend on those, but eventually we're going to catch up on that, and we're going to have more expenditures on, on those that need to be for safety issues in, in some of those sports. So, thank you for bringing up those points. But some of our coaches are doing a good job, and again, it's some where we live, and we're lucky enough to have our students live near great facilities.
Mr. Lovely?
No, I would, I mean, we've gone on long enough. I have some thoughts, but I'll share them with Steve and Matt and Mary and John.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Kelly, did you want to, you had your hand...
I just want to make sure that people know that for this year, we believe that all sports will be running as planned.
Yes.
But that's only due to a tremendous amount of fundraising that happens. 60%, 70% of the program, basically, is fundraising, and that needs to continue unfortunately on a yearly basis.
Right.
And to families who have a lot of activities in sports, we are looking to streamline fundraising so that we are not constantly asking for this, this, and this, so that, you know, families can plan their finances as well.
And we did, like I said, to help with that gap and increase the, the users fees this year, and I think Matt eloquently put, we are at the breaking point, you know, you're not going to get diminishing returns if we increase anymore, so it's going to be more on the, the people out there, the Kate Sumners, the Krista Baggy-Joneses who do the walkathons, the Karen DeLucas and Kyra Russes did the golf tournaments and things like that. We are going to need to depend on, on people out there a, a little bit more, which is fortunate that we have those people, but unfortunate that we are using them as a crutch.
Well, Steve Traster, we see you at 7:00 a.m. on many Monday mornings for our finance subcommittee meetings, and 9:00 at...
Before he leaves, Mr. Steve...
I don't leave, I live too far away.
Will you share the good news story about Friday night's basketball game, what's going to happen?
Yeah, I think I mentioned that we are home for our first boys' game, and then they're on the road for quite a while. But the, most of the members of last year's team are coming back from college or are able to get off, to come back for Friday night, and the banner has been put up, and we will have a quick ceremony in between the JV games and the varsity game. We don't want to do it too late because wrestling's going on at 7:00, and we don't want to interrupt with respect to Wellesley who's coming here. But we are having a, a quick ceremony to, to honor last year's team and Coach LaPresti and his state championship last year.
Can you show us the design of the rings?
I don't have one with it, but I'm sure if you come on Friday, many of them will have them on. Yes.
So, what time is that presentation?
It'll probably happen around 6:30, depending on, between 6:30 and quarter of 7:00, depending on the times of the JVs and, and that. But we are, we'll be doing it before the teams warm up, as not to affect any game time or wrestling that's going on at the same time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve Traster.
No problem.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Steve.
On the revised, on my, on the revised superintendent's goals, at the last meeting, Mr. Lovely had asked, and I added to hire and support and recruit a diverse staff. I edited that goal, and Ms. Kelly had asked and made a reference to closing the achievement gap, and I edited that to working towards closing the achievement gap. I spoke to Mrs. Kelly after the packet went out, and we had a discussion about a measurable goal for achievement, and I'm going to come up with goals for each of the subcategories, subgroups, and disciplines that are tested through MCAS on the growth model. And I'll put those out to the committee for their approval.
Any questions or comments about...
And thank you for indulgence and your patience tonight on all those important topics.
Mrs. Kelly?
First, I'd like to say thank you very much for taking those suggestions. But second of all, I, I would like the school committee to consider going forward that when we start talking goals for a year, that we do it jointly, and that the administration and the school committee sort of are coordinating to say, here's our, whatever, top three priorities, you know, this is what we're going to be doing as a system for the year going forward to try and meet those goals. And obviously, we could have additional goals beyond that. But, you know, identifying a few that we're sort of coordinating on, I think, would, would make a lot of sense going forward.
Any other comments about or feedback about the goals? I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'd like to accept a motion to approve these superintendent's...
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Oh, and lastly, we had asked, and he'll be brief, Mr. Phelan has a brief update on residency, a brief residency.
Thank you, Superintendent Gobey. We have benefited by reorganizing how we approach residency for the Milton Public Schools. We realize this is a, an important topic for us to address to our citizens and our parents. So, through an organizational change, we have created along, through our subfinance committee, a position that stipended for someone to organize the information and the material around residency issues, to help communicate that information to our Milton Police Department Investigation Team, the building principals, and the superintendent's office, to work with our registrar at Milton High, and also relocating potentially our registrar to focus more of her time on registration of students and the registration and residency investigation process. We really believe that this work needs to be done after review in an organized fashion. So, we thought that an organizational shift in how we structure the work was important to the Milton Public Schools. So, we have followed through with that and have posted a position that we have interviewed folks on last week, and we'll be announcing who will be in that position tomorrow. The funding source for that position, again, it's a part-time stipend position, is the result of one of our police investigators going out on maternity leave, so therefore that money will not be expended on her end, and we will have that money at our disposal for the remainder of this fiscal year, and we'll fund this new position in that manner. We think that coordinating this work, keeping our eyes on the focused vigilance around ensuring that every student lives in town that attends our schools, will be very much enhanced and more efficient with this process in place.
I'll say, thank you.
It's an important, important piece of information, important work that we do. Mr. Hubin?
Being even more brief, can you tell the community how many active investigations we have and how many people have been put out?
The, the collection of the data, last year, we, to do it by school year, we investigated almost 140 situations last year. And by mid-spring, I believe I reported out 40 students were excluded. Throughout the summer, through different mechanisms of working with families over the summertime, I believe that we excluded approximately 20 more families. At the beginning of this year, we were very stringent in how we enrolled our new students and families because the period of summertime is a, a large enrollment period. The number at this time, I don't have for this fall session. I think that the reason why we don't have that number is that we need a real, a real organizational team in place. And I think that as we went through the summary, realized that this work was in need of some organization and structure. So, I would be able to work with the several folks that we have working in the high school main office and the middle school main office to come up with that number, and I can report out on it after the holiday break.
May I follow up?
Yeah.
Although you don't have a number, it's not that we're not enforcing our residency laws and trying to do the best job we can currently, correct?
Correct. The, the work has gone on, and the investigations and the work has been happening throughout the fall consistently and as aggressively as it has in the last year. I just don't have the actual number on my desktop right now.
And there have been students excluded every week through the work of the two Milton Police Officers, John Phelan, with the support of the individuals in the school.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
Just with regard to this, we had, I believe at one meeting, had talked about examining the possibility of going after families who were basically abusing the system. I believe that's written into our policy to, to basically go back for some reimbursement of, of funds. I just, I guess I'd put that on the table just for our consideration at some time in the future, perhaps, as part of the update. Once the organization is in place, we could put that back on the table and see where we, we might be going with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Bagley?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to be brief as well. School committee mem, I'm sorry.
One thing that I just want to ask a question about, I just happened to be in the middle of the whole college experience, and I thought I saw on the Milton High School website that there was a college financing seminar coming up. Is that possible? And if it is, could we somehow just send that out to everybody who...
College financing.
Financing session. I think it's December 16th at 7:00 p.m., but I wanted to verify that, and I apologize for sort of interjecting that.
It went last year, it was a very formative...
I'll put it out in this...
I guess spreading the word would be a great idea, would be my perspective.
We'll do it in the email blast, and we'll do an alert now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, school committee members got the updated draft of the calendar. It just has a few variations, changing presentation dates. Were there any problems with any of those dates? Yes, Mr. Hubin?
On January 5th, we're having the athletic financial update. I think, I think we got that tonight?
Oh, we just did.
And we're missing the activities update, so maybe those two were switched by...
I think that was it. Good catch, thank you. Anything else? Okay, I don't think we have to vote that. I just want to give a few updates. I've been going through the executive session minutes to see which ones are eligible for release, and we will vote out in our, in a January meeting. We will release some of our executive session meetings after we vote them in executive session. So, I just wanted to know, everyone to know that those minutes would be coming soon. You'll see here, I have a little water bottle, a new water bottle. It's from Sustainable Milton, and they are actually donating these to school committee members and Board of Selectmen. So, at our next meeting, we'll get an update. Yes, yes. And they're also for sale. I wasn't going to say anything. They're also for sale to the public, but a representative will be here next month to talk a little bit more about it, but I just wanted to share that information with everyone. This is just a sample to show. And I also, we have a very full, had a very full agenda tonight, and I had proposed having the video from the celebration from the Milton Foundation for Education play at the beginning. So, hopefully, we could do that at our next meeting because it really is worth seeing, and I would like to share that with everyone publicly. It is available on YouTube, by the way, if anyone wants to Google it. But moving quickly, I'll just actually, I, I thought it would be important to ask Glenn to briefly give us a report back to the school committee about the MASC annual meeting. So, thanks.
I went, it was good.
It was. I went for the business meeting. I didn't stay for the next two days of talks because I had to work. But we had spent some time on the resolutions, and let me just hit a couple pieces of them. The first resolution, we spent a lot of time on the school funding where we were talking about supporting adequate funding for the schools, but then it sort of migrated off into the issue of raising the income tax, raising the sales tax and this, the other. And this committee had expressed an interest in dividing that question and, and supporting one but not the other, and that's in fact what happened. MASC decided to divide the question and voted in favor of the resolution on adequate funding for education without going into potentially a political, politically dangerous methods of suggesting that people do it. But to reiterate once again, support for adequate funding. Most of the other resolutions passed, the resolution on, supporting Metco passed, which is one that this body had not voted in favor of. But the resolution on keeping Medicaid funds at the schools, which we had voted for, passed. The resolution on readiness schools, to support them with certain conditions passed as well as this body had voted. The same with the charter schools, that changes in the number of charter schools not be made without some restrictions passed as well. We had voted in favor of the issues of district restructuring, which said that districts shouldn't be restructured without the approval of the local school committee, and that passed MASC as well. One where we differed, the resolution on that the school committee should vote and adopt school improvement plans, MASC voted that that should in fact happen. Not surprisingly, frankly. Reauthorization of IDEA passed. And the final two, three, that charter school reimbursement, if schools are not being reimbursed to full Chapter 70, the charter schools shouldn't be reimbursed to full Chapter 70, passed as well. As well as the final two resolutions in support of educator excellence and inclusion of school committee members on task force. So for the most part, they all passed in one form or another. And the one where we spent the most time on, interestingly, MASC ended up doing exactly what we had come to as a conclusion at the end as well. Conquer. So it was an interesting meeting.
Thank you for going.
Thank you for going. We appreciate it. Okay, Policy Subcommittee. Can we hear from you, Mr. Hubien?
Yes. Field trip policy, first reading on an addendum to the field trip policy. Basically, every year, we have certain annual field trips that the teachers that are handling it need to fundraise or do different things a lot further out than we normally would look at them. So this addendum pretty much would designate certain trips as annual and not subject to the school committee policy on coming before and presenting, since many of them don't change year to year. So once approved, and most of these have been approved, that would become an annual field trip, and we would not have to approve it again unless it substantially changed from what it was the year prior. The only addendum is the one paragraph that you see. The annual field trip list is what has been suggested for this year. That is not part of the policy. That is what the superintendent and her administration are recommending as annual field trips for the coming year. So the only thing that is under consideration is the field trip policy addendum. It was passed out of the Policy Subcommittee with the superintendent's recommendation, and this is the first reading. Be able to ask questions on it now, and also at a subsequent meeting before we vote on it. So that's the field trip policy. Is there any questions on it currently?
Mr. Palatet?
Just one question. The line where it says, "The superintendent will provide the school committee with a list of annual field trips each year." Might it be reasonable to put some sort of date in there, you know, by October 1st of each year? Or, you know, we wouldn't want the list to appear in June, having already been accomplished.
Why don't we say as early as possible? I think we discussed that we'd like to put that list in place the spring prior to the school year. One of the main focuses has been the ability for teachers to proactively promote the field trips and have parents have the ability to know in advance for the purposes of them saving and being able to participate. So maybe in the spring of each year. But the goal would be that these trips would be, these are the yearly trips and the every other year trips that happen each year. And this list should not vary very much at all in the categories and the places that are going at each school, Milton High and Pierce.
Mrs. Kelly?
I'm not sure why we're at this point, quite frankly. You know, one of the things that we do, I don't know how long it takes for us to approve annual field trips. But one of the things we review is, is this field trip taking students out of the classroom during a school day? And/or teachers? And what are the costs involved? And the costs will change, you know, depending on what's happening in the economy, et cetera. These, to my opinion, you know, in my opinion, and granted, it's just my opinion, are important issues for the school committee to consider. For instance, the annual boys hockey exchange. This is a sports team that pays $500 for, to play that sport for the year. And we're now asking, I guess, some fundraising either on behalf of just the family themselves or maybe beyond that, to do more fundraising, to travel somewhere for an exchange. A wonderful opportunity, I'm sure, but, you know, trying to be cognizant of the economic times, how much we actually do ask our parents to contribute, you know, throughout the year. I wonder if, you know, putting some, certain field trips on a list that sort of is outside of that venue, I think is troublesome, from my perspective.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Hubien.
The issue is, is that these trips don't really change substantively each year. And the reason that we're putting them on this list is that once we look at it and we decide, well, it's going to cost $2,100, and it's going to cost $2,100 every year, why not just go ahead and do that if we've already reviewed it, we've already approved it, we've looked at the fundraising, it's going to be the same next year? What this says is if there's any substantial changes to that trip, then it would have to come back before us. But if there's no substantial changes, we've already reviewed it, we've already looked at it, and this gives the teachers and the planners more time to be able to coordinate, maybe do cost savings, and get that fundraising in place so that if those students want to go, they can. And again, we will have already reviewed these trips annually the first time. And then unless there's a big change, they're just going to go forward on a, what do they call it, a green?
Evergreen.
Evergreen clause. We all know what that is. So, I mean, that's, that's pretty much what we're looking at here.
I understand the mechanism you desire to put in place, but if, if, let's say, this April, we approve, you know, six of these. I guess from a school committee perspective, I don't understand why next April, they can't just be brought forward to us again on one sheet of paper, list out, you know, what is the cost? Because the cost will change, you know, to say that this trip will be $2,100 every single year from, in an evergreen policy, I think just won't hold true. But then I would like to hear more details about what kind of fundraising opportunities are being presented. And quite frankly, if they're on enough, then I would probably say, I don't think we should have this field trip because we have this, you know, this split in terms of people being able to avail themselves of opportunities that many in our community, in the schools, can't. So for whatever it's worth, that's my concern. Again, you know, if it's one meeting in April that we're saying, we're just going to look at the annual review, let's, let's get the exact details as to what's happening with these particular trips and consider them at that time. That would be my.
Okay.
If they go forward.
Any other comments from the first reading? Yes?
I thought the whole goal of this was to try to do what Mary's saying, which is so the parents can plan well in advance. Because last year, when we talked about some of these trips, and some of them were more expensive, and we were concerned, we heard a lot of feedback from parents saying, "But my kid mowed grass all last summer to save for that trip to Spain, and now you're saying maybe they can't go?" So that was our goal, was trying to get this approved ahead of time. So if we can find a way between these two, I think we can, because we're after the same thing. It just might be the language or something. But it's the same point, help parents know ahead of time so they can fundraise, and their kids can work out the money.
Exactly.
Mr. Phelan?
I think that that's exactly what this policy is attempting to achieve. And I think it actually does achieve that, that end.
Okay.
Okay. First reading. I don't believe we need approval on it. It's only the second reading.
Second reading, we need a motion approval.
We'll do that the next time, and any changes to that will be coordinated ahead of time so that everyone has that in front of them. The second is the class size policy. It's been brought up that there were some issues with all the detail in the class size policy as well as language that talked about specific people within our schools that might be discriminated against. So what we've done is basically eliminated a lot of the language within the policy and said that based upon the funding, we will try and lower class sizes whenever possible. And that's what we've done with the policy that we have here. This is also out for first reading. There certainly can be any discussion that any of the committee members would like to have, but that was the design of what we were trying to do.
It's consistent with the discussions that we've certainly had in the recent past. Any comments? Mrs. Kelly?
Just in terms of, and I don't know how we, maybe we could just send email suggestions, but just the first sentence, to me, I think the school committee very strongly believes that class size has a bearing upon effective teaching and learning. I don't want to water it down such that our, you know, sort of driving goal with budgets is to make sure that we can get reasonable class sizes. So, you know, maybe we could just strengthen the language a little bit to, to, I mean, the reason we have a policy on class size, not all school committees do. But the reason we do is because we do believe it's so important, and I think we just need to.
If there's any changes that people would like to make outside of this open meeting, please send them to Bev Quinn, and she will get them to the Policy Subcommittee for review.
Great. Thank you. Anything else on class size? Okay.
Again, that was first reading. The last one tonight is the superintendent's evaluation policy. It was requested that we review it based upon there's no goal of AYP. And looking at the superintendent's goals, AYP is not addressed in her goals. So the policy committee, Subcommittee voted not to change the evaluation policy at this time. So there's no review at this point.
There is no review.
Unless a new one has been, will be requested. So it's done. Okay. That's it for my report.
Any discussion about that?
So, just as a reminder, who sits on the Policy Subcommittee?
Byrne, myself, and Krista.
Okay, and so there was a vote of the Subcommittee to say that we don't think anything needs to change with regard. That's your recommendation to the school committee?
That's our recommendation. Therefore, there is no, there is no change unless you would like to request it be reviewed again.
Well, or unless there's a vote of the school committee to say we accept the recommendation of the, right. So I guess I would ask that this be put on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize, Mrs. Kelly, because I went straight to policy and skipped over finance, so.
But all right. First topic is the warrant committee's recommended FY-10 revised budget number. We did meet with the warrant committee and did present to the warrant committee the impact of having to make, I believe it was a $550,000 cut at that time. And I don't know whether, should we just go through what we thought the impact of that would be? Or should we just move on to?
I have a little update.
Oh.
The warrant committee had been talking about reducing budgets by $700,000 at the February town meeting. Ours would have been $440,000 or whatever. In anticipation of 9C cuts from the governor. They've since been advised by town council that unless the 9C cuts actually happen, they can't prospectively reduce budgets in favor of 9C cuts. So in other words, they can't just pick a number like $700,000 and say, pursuant to expected 9C cuts, we're going to reduce the budgets. They would have to take that money and deposit it somewhere. They'd have to reallocate any money they reduced from allowable expenditures and put it into the, move that be moved to the reserve fund or the stabilization fund or somewhere so that in fact, it would be then available for reallocation at the annual town meeting. The issue being you can't just remove it and drop it into the void somewhere because absent actual 9C cuts expressed by the governor, there is no void to drop it into. So they, I believe that they're meeting tomorrow night, are going to discuss what they're going to do about this because it means they can't just pick a number. The special town meeting in February is going to have to react to an actual 9C cut, should one occur by then. And realistically, one may occur by then. But it's, the number that's going to be in place before the town meeting is going to be an actual number. It's not going to be an estimate of what might happen for the remainder of the year. And they're going to have to decide if they want to, for instance, make the $700,000 deduction from all the town budgets and recommend that anything above any 9C cut that occurs between now and then be placed in the reserve fund or the stabilization fund or somewhere. And they're going to have to figure out how they intend to deal with that. So, excuse me, the landscape has changed a little bit. This is from town council in consultation with Department of Revenue. So this is a pretty official word on it. They're going to have to take this route. So choosing a number to decrease budgets by is not going to fly at this point. They're going to have to, it's going to have to be a real number, or they're going to have to decide where to put it. Excuse me. And the, of course, the issue with stabilization is it takes a two-thirds vote to go into stabilization, and it takes a two-thirds vote to come back out. And just because, you know, it may not be there, you know, just because cuts may not arise, the town meeting may not want to take it back out and give it back to the department. They may want to leave it in the stabilization fund. And my point in an email I sent was that moving things in and out of the stabilization fund probably would not look good with bond rating agencies, that you're using it as sort of a carryall to move things in and out of. So the reserve fund has its own issues, that these things are not necessarily unforeseen events that you could spend it on at the end of the year, so it will be interesting discussion.
So does that say from the state's perspective, a city or town can only deal retrospectively with issues? And the example that comes to mind is, this year in October, we had to adjust down our particular appropriation because the monies that we had forecasted to have in play for the closeout, or for this year, didn't, didn't come to pass, for whatever reason. So we couldn't look at our revenue side and, and say, we don't think that, I don't know, excise tax is going to come in by that amount? We couldn't put it somewhere over there? Is that what they're saying?
Basically, once the tax rate's been certified, we have a revenue projection for this year that, you know, is based on last year's actuals for local receipts and what the, the, the state budget grants us and state aid and so forth. In the, in the fall, I mean, we had made projections last spring of what state aid would be and so forth, and they didn't come true. So this fall, we had a budget that was out of balance. So we had to make cuts in the appropriations to bring the budget back into balance. That was the real situation. In some sense, this is a projected situation that we're thinking we will be out of balance come February town meeting, or possibly after February town meeting. But the ruling is that rather than changing revenue estimates and sort of depositing the money nowhere, you just, you can, you can change your expenditure estimates, but it still has to balance. You can't change your revenue estimates, so that money has to be parked somewhere so that the town's budget still is in balance. And so the question of where and how to park it, if in fact that's what you want to do, is going to be a topic of more, more committee discussions, I'm sure.
So, go ahead. One quick thing, I just want to recognize the warrant committee because in reality, what they were trying to do was acknowledge the fact that when you have to make a cut later on in the year, that it's a much more drastic cut to try and make up for those revenue losses. So they were trying to be proactive and help us be able to balance our finances for the rest of the year. But, so it wasn't really, that they were doing anything wrong, just all in working together. Mrs. Kelly, sorry.
That's okay. So as part of this process, I mean, we started with the expectation, at least our presentation was made, on the expectation that the number that they were looking at to cut was $900,000. Good news story, I guess, could be said that now we're looking at $700,000. However, from a procedural perspective, we've presented the school committees and the administration's view as to what the impact of $550,000 of cuts would be. However, I thought they were working against a deadline, which they had to put into a warrant. Will they still need input from the school committee as they wind down to that deadline? And I thought that was like before the first of the year, but I could be wrong on that. So where are we at from a process perspective in terms of what's required of the school committee and the administration to present to the warrant committee?
I'm not sure in that, I don't think they've met since they've gotten this, this opinion from the town council. My guess is that an article suggesting recommending 9C cuts will probably stay in the warrant, but without a number attached to it because we won't know what the number is. If they want to make a $700,000 deduction or whatever the number is from expenditures that might exceed those 9C cuts, they're going to need a separate article to reduce appropriations in the current year budgets and to place the money somewhere. So there might be, it might add one article to the warrant. And again, at this point. And again, at this point, there might be a catch-all number of 700,000 in the second article and zero in the first to be adjusted closer to town meeting. It may be one of those no recommendation at this time situations where you put in a placeholder article and see what develops between now and the third week of February. But I don't think anyone has worked out the details of where all this is going just yet. I did make the suggestion that putting the $700,000 out there as a number and asking department managers and department heads and so forth to hold it back, knowing that it could be possible that we might have to take it back, say, at the annual town meeting, made some sense. And suggested that possibly maybe getting the elected boards to, to make a commitment to do that would make some sense as well. At least it would, you know, put the, put the decision in the hands of the administrative teams at the various parts of the town and just put it out there, be still proactive, say, we're looking, we still think there's going to be a $700,000 shortfall. You shouldn't plan on spending all that money, and if we and the selected and, you know, library cemetery trustees all say, yeah, that's right, that could accomplish the same thing. So we'll see. You know, I think it'll be a topic for discussion rather quickly.
Hold back versus a cut.
Like tomorrow night, probably.
I think that's a very good suggestion, actually.
Lovely head of comments, sorry.
Well, my antenna went up when I was, it was suggested that we might be reposing this money in the hands of anybody other than the schools. So I'm very much in favor of your suggestion, and I think it could accomplish the same ends, but I don't want to have, at the end of the year, to be told that our justification for recovering those funds from a particular committee, which would presumably be the warrant committee, would have to somehow be established. I'd much rather, I'd much rather, I'd be perfectly happy to vote as a committee. My suspicion is we'd vote unanimously to withhold it or to hold it, rather, but I, but I'm not inclined, at this point in time, to support any suggestion that we be cut and then the money be held by a third party, even if it's the warrant committee. I just prefer that not to happen.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly?
So the next item is just to give a very brief update on FY-11 progress. As we've already heard in the previous discussion, the target is a bit moving, because the target that we start with in terms of presenting to the town and to the warrant committee and anyone else who wants to hear what the impact of a level dollar budget is, we need to start to figure out what's our level dollar. And our, in our conversations with the warrant committee, the expectation is, whatever that cut ends up being for that mid-year cut is what our level dollar would be. So, you know, some of the numbers previously presented have been as much as $550,000. So, you know, do we add that to the amount that we need to try and work backwards into to get, I mean, I think one of the numbers that's been bandied about is we have to find $3 million from the budget that we previously submitted to the warrant committee to get to a level dollar, and, and we need to be able to describe what that impact is. So we are talking, I believe, as dire in terms of funding issues this year as we did last year, if not perhaps even worse. The administration has met several times and is starting to craft, you know, some of their brainstorming ideas in terms of what we could look to, to achieve those savings, but we are, once again, in very dire straits with regard to our budget for FY-11. So I just want to make sure that everyone's clear about that. This is not, this is not going to be a very, this is not going to be a pleasant experience, as unfortunately we find every year when we start looking at budgets, but even though we had an override last year, there is no expectation of, of having the amount of funds that we need to run the program that we presently run.
The minutes clearly reflect that on December, whatever date it is, that we publicly disclose that we have very serious problems facing us for next year, so that no one can say that it wasn't mentioned at this table early and often, that there may be some very significant cuts next year in the level of services. Last year, there was some, you know, year after year, someone comes in and says, why you never mentioned it? So I'd like to make sure that the minutes in bold italics mention this particular aspect of Mrs. Kelly's warning, which is appropriate.
And I would also like to just say that this current year, you know, we have the override, as you said, Mrs. Kelly, we had stimulus money, but we also have administrators and principals who took no raise. So our superintendent and our assistant superintendent and the principals took no raises, and that's, that's a fact. It, you know, questions might be out there around that, but that is a fact, that no raises were given to any of those folks this year, and, you know, that's another benefit that we had this year.
And just to carry on with the, the other elephant on the table, stimulus money. All stimulus money does, if we spend any of it on any of this, is just delay for one year. Any cuts we have to make, if we, if we use something for stimulus money in fiscal 11, all that means is you have to cut it in fiscal 12. I mean, it's, it's, it's a one-year delay, because that's one-time money. So we have to be very careful about what we use. People can say, well, you're going to be cut, but you have all the stimulus money. At, at the absolute best that stimulus money does for us is buy some of the cuts one year, so that you're making some of them in fiscal 10, fiscal 11, and some in fiscal 12. And that's the absolute best it does, and that's the funding cliff that everyone's been talking about, as everyone's been using all the stimulus money to try to prevent layoffs and prevent this and prevent that all over the place. The more you do, the worse fiscal 12 is going to be when this all abruptly comes to a halt.
Anything else, Mrs. Kelly?
I believe that's it. On that note...
Thank you. Ms. Fagley-Jones will move to the wellness committee update, please.
I am just going to make an announcement and postpone the rest of it until January. But the announcement is January 13th, the wellness committee with Superintendent Gormly has, well, actually Mary's suggestion and idea, we're going to have apparent internet safety night, January 13th. So I just want to put it out there, save the date. You'll know more details, and you'll hear more about the wellness committee in January, in the interim.
Thank you. Consolidated facilities committee update? Mr. Hubien?
We received a 12-page report from Vista Pianidosi. It's been distributed to all members on the school committee. The conclusion was, and his recommendation is, that we move forward consolidating the facilities, and that in order to do that, it'll take a great amount of effort amongst the town departments, as well as hiring someone that will be able to handle all that, those challenges. After reading the report and meeting, the consolidated facilities committee, as most committees in Milton are, love to do, has made a subcommittee that will be drafting a recommendation on what they'd like to do. And that subcommittee involves all people on the committee that are not people that would be voting on that recommendation, i.e., Selectman Kathy Fagan, Lyndalee, and myself are not on that subcommittee. So, more to follow, and that's where we're at this point.
Mrs. Kelly?
Why would the voting members not be on that subcommittee?
Because we would end up voting on it to consolidate or not consolidate at a specific point.
But so where is the view, I guess, my question would be from the subcommittee's perspective, where is the viewpoint of the oversight committee, either the selectmen or the board, the school committee?
They, we've met many, many times, and, you know, there, our feedback has already been given to them for them to, you know, take forward.
Mr. Lovely, sorry.
I had a short chat with Mr. Chacallo, because somebody on the committee, I think here, someone at the table tipped them that I had indicated that I was a bit skeptical about consolidated, Mary shaking her head. I was at the corporators' meeting for the Milton Hospital, and I had a nice talk with Tony, and I have a great deal of respect for Tony, and I said that the anecdotal information that I've heard and I've read about across the country, just over a number of years I've been on this committee, about consolidation is that, I had my reservations, and I, I still do, but I told Tony that I was going to try and find, find out more information, and I started that process today by asking the listserv for experiences that they may have had with consolidated facilities, as opposed to consolidated administration, which I have even more problems with inherently. But that having been said, I thought we were going to get a recommendation from the consolidated facilities committee as to what to do. And maybe I'm just misunderstanding what's happening, and if I am, I'd like to be corrected tonight. Are we being told that there is a subcommittee of the consolidated facilities committee that's going to come up with the final recommendation of the consolidated facilities committee? Or are they going to come up with a recommendation for the consolidated facilities committee to vote up or down, and therefore recommend to the selectmen and the school committee that they approve such an action? I'm missing, it's the latter. So you will vote?
Yes.
Absolutely.
You just won't formulate the recommendation that, that, I think that's what Mary's...
That's much better.
That's much more comforting.
Right, okay. Didn't realize that was the...
And in, you know, just in terms of open communication, I have been forwarding all the reports from, that we have been receiving for consolidated facilities to school committee members, so please don't hesitate to contact Chris Aray if you have questions with anything that you're reading. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Oh, if I could finish up. Mr. Pianidosi has submitted his bills, and they are significantly larger, and I guess if you're talking about $4,000, $4,700, but I, I believe he's going to eat that 700. I haven't confirmed that yet, but I assume that, or just speaking with people, that that was going to go away, because 4,000 was all that was budgeted. And I believe that's where we're at. And he is not interested in taking the job if it was so considered in Milton. He's very happy doing what he's doing.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go very quickly for the school committee subcommittee for facilities. We have a new HVAC person that's been on board for about six months, and he's doing a fabulous job. He's reported out to us. We're looking at all opportunities for benefiting from rebates, N-Star energy rebates. We benefited from the lighting project that was redone, not only in the Fields House, but also at Pierce and Glover. We have all new lighting in there that is not only costing us just a fraction of the cost, but the rebates that were received were great. Landscapers are on board at almost all of our schools, but we're still looking for some more. The solar panel project at the high school is done. Cunningham and Colicott has gone out to bid, and that should begin very, well, probably, depending on the weather, I'm not going to say when. We are, have set a few goals that we'd like to advocate on behalf of the school department, having more skilled tradesmen, such as an electrician, or a skilled mechanic, or carpenter on our payroll. We realize the times are tight, but we've recognized the significant savings from having an in-house person doing the HVAC, and, and it really would behoove us to advocate for that in the future. So that's one of our goals. We're going to continue to look at opportunities for energy conservation and the possibility of consolidating evening activities in the schools. Ms. Gormly and I are going to meet with the PTOs after the first of the year. We also are going to look at energy consumption updates on a regular basis, which we have done in the past as well, but Matt and Rick Malmstrom, one of our members, are, you know, presenting graphs and data, and it's, we're fine-tuning it, and to be able to look at our consumption and how we are, how can we, how we can fine-tune that as well. We've set up our meetings for the year. We are looking for some outside folks to join us, if there's anyone in the town that has any expertise around phone systems or facilities and would be interested in joining our committees. We meet from four to five on Thursday afternoons, and our next meeting is December 17th. So that was really a speed, speed version of the facilities, yes.
As part of our budget process last year, we had talked about potentially contracting someone who would come in and help us with energy savings. As a matter of fact, I think we had even a line item for the savings with regard to that. I think in previous meetings, we had talked about that there were some very simple things that had been mentioned as part of an effort that could be made. And so I guess what I'd ask is, have we undertaken any of those efforts? And if so, have they been successful in terms of getting everyone to cooperate on them? Or, I guess more broadly, is that something that we should be entertaining going forward? I'm not sure what happened with the process. I know that some other communities, or maybe even MASC has chimed in, saying, you know, be cautious about this. I guess I'd like to sort of either come to a conclusion in terms of whether we, in the future, will contract for that service, and if we will not, which is, you know, totally understandable, then are there things that we can be doing, you know, every day, sort of, in the schools to help us on that effort?
That's a great question, Mrs. Kelly, and we actually talked a great deal about that at our last meeting, and with Matt coming new on board, we really felt like we needed time to allow him to get up and running in terms of really understanding all of the workings of, you know, that's what I was talking about, the graphs and the energy consumption. And with this new HVAC person, we really feel that we've made a lot of progress that maybe would have been made by utilizing an outside vendor to come in and help us identify those things. He's identified many areas in which we can make the improvements ourselves, so I can't, you know, give you a definitive answer yet. It is something that we're absolutely looking at. We will continue to look at it, probably, I would say, in the next two months, we'd probably have a better sense. Matt, does that sound?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Do we have any next meeting agenda items? Yes, Mrs. Kelly?
I don't know whether it's too late, but it's coming to that time of year when the in-report comes, or is required to be submitted. I don't know what the timeline is, but I had asked in the past that perhaps we'd get that somewhat earlier, rather than saying, we need this turned around in a day. I'm not sure what the timing is. And if it's outside of the next meeting, you know, needs to be submitted before the next meeting, perhaps it could be sent out via Bev? And any comments sent back to Bev, but giving people enough time to review it?
Yeah, we're on schedule to give you ample time to look at it.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other new next meeting agenda items? And our next meeting isn't until January, so I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. Thank you to Cable for all your great work. Mr. Lovely?
If I haven't said it publicly, I just, because it's important that people start thinking about elections in the spring, I do not intend to run again in the spring. I've said that privately to a number of people, but I really hope there are people out there that are anxious to come and express their opinion and share their views. I think it's time for a fresh face. So I just wanted to make sure that I did that publicly and give people fair warning, and hopefully we'll come up with some great candidates.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, thank you to Cable, and thank you very much. Do I have motion to...
Circle.
All in favor?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just too...